You guys already give them a call? Are you on me too?
We gotta get going.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready, Chair.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hello, we're gonna get going with the August meeting for the State of Choice Planning Commission. Start with attendance?
Yes.
Okay. We'll start with attendance, well.
I don't have name tags.
Yeah.
Bill. James.
James.
Brad.
Suzanne.
Spelling.
Do we have Sarah on virtually? Yep, Steve.
Present.
Anthony is not here yet, and then myself, Ratty Jagan, present. All right, I think next action is approval of rest, meeting minutes?
I believe we should start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh.
Yes.
Have we done that? Okay, I will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chairman. Before we can get started, if I could just let the board know that I have two conflicts on the agenda this evening. I have the privilege of representing Redemption Christian Academy, and they are on the consent agenda. And I also have the privilege of representing Jared George, who's on the regular agenda is new business. So I can't participate in either one of those. But if any legal questions come up, you have any issues, we can, we can get your legal representation on.
Thank you. All right. Any other housekeeping before we take a motion for last meeting?
Yes, this is Sarah Winger, and I must recuse myself from voting on the consent agenda due to the second item on the agenda, which is the Unity House modification to a previously approved site plan.
Thank you, Sarah.
Chair, Chair, my day, I suggest we, we vote on the consent agenda to tranches then.
Sure, we can do that, I didn't know that was possible. Okay. So we'll first move our, take motions on the last meetings minutes, correct?
Uh, yes, correct.
Okay. Were there any comments on the previous meetings minutes that need to get addressed? No? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from last one. And a second? Second? Okay. Moving, moving to take a vote, all, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, our next order of business is the consent agenda. There are one, two, three, three items on consent. So we can start with items, trying to find the one that, okay, items 2022-0073 and 2022-0087. The fir-, do, do we need to go through those? Do we need to discuss anything here?
We, or, or you could ask, are there any members of the public?
That'll be my next order. Anything that the commissioners would like to speak to? Okay. We can open the floor for public comment on the consent agenda. Item 73 is 17 South River Street. The applicant proposes to convert a vacant residential building into storage space. And applicant is represented by Lisa Rodriguez and Luke Korjenko. Anyone from the public here to speak or online? If there's no one here to speak on that, the other item was 87 for 2605 Avenue. The applicant is Redemption Church of the Christ of the Apostolic Faith. They propose to convert a commercial space into a bakery. No other site enhancements or exterior upgrades beyond the wall mounted signage are proposed. Anyone from the public come to speak on that item? Online or in person? Okay. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve those two items specifically. Okay. Taking second? Need it? Okay, thank you, Anthony. I'll turn it over to you after this pass. Okay, and then moving for a vote? Want to start the vote?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Yeah, James?
Yes, to approve.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Anthony is present now.
I vote yes.
I also vote yes, motion passes. And then I will turn it back over to Anthony, who is our regular chair for the planning commission.
So Anthony, just an update on this, this is the third item under the consent agenda. 2021-69, project at 97 Fifth Avenue, Sarah had to recuse herself from this, which is why it was removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I don't think any of the commissioners had comments for any of the consent agenda, so we're on this one. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept or pass the 2020, it's listed as 2021-0069, should that be 2022?
Uh, no, this was a prior, a previous approval.
Okay.
This is a modification to the 2021 application.
Okay.
This just involved, I believe, some changes to the, the facade, the cladding on the building.
Correct. Okay, I will make a motion that we approve that consent item.
All right, moving to about all those in favor. Missy? And Ra.
Yes, to approve.
Suzanne Spelling?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, she refused.
She's, she's refused. So the motion carries five zero. Application 2021-69, 69 passes.
Can we already did those two?
Well, and, and just one minor note, the last item on the agenda, while listed under new business, is actually old business. So, um, came in with tradition, the, the only old business item we have would be King's Landing two, so I think that that should be heard next.
Are we treating it as old business?
It is old business, it is, in fact, no application is, the previous application, no new application has been submitted.
Okay.
All right, so then, in that case, we'll move on to old business, so we've got PLPC 2022-83. Sorry about that, is this anybody? Okay. Who said Aaron will go on to the old business first?
Correct, and the, the first item under old business is 2022-83, King's Landing two.
Right. So do we have the applicant present?
I think he can work that magic, we'll see. Yeah, you'll have to just. Just such an accident. She's, yeah.
Just at the X on the top right?
Thank you. Oh, I made this.
Yeah, there you go, that's the one. There you go.
Yep. Sorry, turn my phone on, I'll switch it off. Thank you.
Just keep it like a fist, fist away from your mouth. How's that?
Yeah.
Okay, so again, for the record, John Lapper, Land Use Attorney for the project. Cosmo Marfione behind me is the principal of the applicant. Just to clarify the procedure, we're an old, old business because we've been at this for about a year and a half and made a set of changes this time to address the comments of the, the commission members as well as the public. And we were pleased that this time we got, you know, what we can consider a mildly positive set of comments from the neighbors, which has always been our attention to, you know, keep softening the project so we could get the commission's support. And Cosmo's here to go through the changes, we'll be as brief as we can, but I know there's new members and we just want to explain where we are now from, from where we started. So with that, I'll turn it over to Cosmo.
Next slide. Good evening. Cosmo Marfione, President of BDC Group, I just wanted to introduce the team for the new members. We have John Lapper, who's our project attorney, George Olson from Olson and Associates, and Claudia Olson, who are the project architects, and Claudia is our preservation architect, Nick Costa from Advanced Engineering, who's a project civil engineer, Alana Moran from VHB, our traffic engineer, David Smith, who's our planning and development consultant, and Steve Oberon, who's from Columbia Heritage, who's our archaea-, archaeologists. Tonight with us, we're gonna have, we're gonna hear from George, from Nick and Alana about the project. Next slide, please. And these, these are the topics we're gonna cover tonight. We'll go as quickly as we can, but we want to give it a good, detailed presentation for the, for the folks who are hearing this for the first time. Some project highlights. Next slide. So I just wanted to go over what we originally had in our submission and updated submission. So the project is located on the northeast corner of New Federal Street and Fifth Avenue in the B4 Central Commercial Zone District. Our original submission, we proposed 62 residential apartment units with 62 indoor parking spaces. No parking is required, this is inclusive of the eight from King's One, okay? So, so originally, you know, 62 minus eight, 14 outdoor parking spaces. And, and for the public benefit, we're proposing to improve the lot at the corner of Jacob and Fifth with 38 new spots for the city for the, for the public in 1500 square feet of retail. This, this proposal did not included, it, it did include taking down all the buildings that are currently on Fifth Avenue. The new proposal, we reduced the amount of residential apartment units to 52. We're keeping, so there'll be 42 new apartment units in five stories, between five and four stories. And then we're gonna keep the Fifth Avenue, as you see. We're gonna keep the, we're gonna try to keep the, the original, like, single family structure on Fifth and, and do a new infill structure, which will yield us another 10, around 10 apartments, so a total of 52. By doing so, we cannot build another parking garage under another parking level, as we originally proposed. So the parking spots drastically reduced to 36, less obviously the eight from King's One, so we have 28. We still have the 14 outdoor parking spaces and the 38 new parking spaces for the community. And the, and the retail square footage did shrink to 600, but we do activate the corner. Instead of having the corner of, of Federal and Fifth being the entrance to the building, we carved it out, and as you will see in George will show you, for another 600 square feet of outdoor seating area for, for the, for the retail space. Next. And with that, I'm gonna have Nick Costa, our civil engineer, come up, and he's gonna talk to you a little bit about the site plan and and some of the utilities and so on and so forth, which essentially stayed the same from the original application.
Good evening, Nick Costa from Advanced Engineering Survey, and as Cosmo mentioned, this is a project that's been in front of the board, the commission a couple of times, and it has made some major, major changes to it. As Cosmo mentioned, the, the site has, is located at the intersection of Federal, New Federal and Fifth Avenue. And there are existing structures at that corner, near that corner that will remain. And the new building is being developed around those, those existing structures that will be rehab-, rehabilitated and an additional infill structure will be built there. As far as civil engineering part of this, the circulation has remained with the exception that we no longer go out to Fifth Avenue as we had in the previous plan. And the utilities are still similar to what we had in the original application. The, there is sanitary sewer along Fifth Avenue. There's a water main that runs parallel to the property along New Federal Street, which we will connect our, our sanitary sewer system and our domestic in fire protection water laterals to those, to those existing systems. So that, that's really for the civil engineering portion of it, that's pretty much, you know, things have remained as they were, with the exception that there isn't an access to Fifth Avenue. There is also a parking lot that's been developed over at the corner of Jacob and Fifth. And that was also shown on the original application. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to George, who will get into the specifics and details of the changes to the, to the building structure. Good evening, George Olson, Olson Associates Architects. What are the next one? You can keep going. One of the things that we talked about, which was back on the last several presentations, Cosmo mentioned that we were going to remove the existing buildings that on the site, we had originally done a study, Claudia in our office is a preservation architect, and we had indicated, I think, to Cosmo at that time and to the board, that it was extremely expensive. These were relatively derelict buildings. About a third of each of the buildings would have had to have been removed or substantially restructured. And in, as Cosmo indicated, we're leaving, so he will be spending money to renovate those. And this was originally the context, but the context now is pretty much what's there, so we can keep going. You can keep going. So our new building, there's a couple of things that I did, and we start with the renderings. The, I think the last submission that we had, we talked about moving and doing on Federal Street, making, it was a seven-story building, shifting the bulk to Federal Street, now that we've reduced the number of units and we're keeping the existing building that allowed us to pull the bulk back down. So we no longer have seven stories, we're at five stories on Federal Street. And then as I walk down, and over the while down Fifth Avenue, you'll see we keep the existing buildings with the exception of a couple infill buildings that are by mass and character, very similar to what's there now. But I did want to point out, one of the things that had been brought up several times, we had always had the corner as the main entrance to the apartments, and we had this tall glass structure with the elevator and lobby went up the entire building. And there was some concern about that being too commercial looking and too bright on the corner and too, I think, dense, it wasn't. So what we've done now is we still, we've shifted the, the entrance is much smaller, it is still, it's on Federal Street. But as now you can see, we no longer have that glass tower that goes all the way up. We instead have unit balconies and things on the corner. So rather than having this larger glass opaque type structure, it's now much more translucent and it's much more open. So it helps turn the corner from the more the harder facade, it's not that hard, but on Federal Street, now the building opens up on the corner and you get a hint that it's much more residential as it turns down Fifth Ave. Next. This is a view rendering from across the street from the church, as you're starting to look south on Fifth Avenue. And one thing that I, Nick didn't point out, Cosmo hasn't pointed out either, is that, that, all of our other submissions, we had come all the way over to the property line of the church, and you drove underneath there, and the building extended all the way over. This submission, we're pushing that back. So it is, this has been an easement anyway for utilities. But now that, that the building is no longer on the property line, so it is pushed back. So it is not quite as far back as it is currently open with the parking, but it is about 20, 22 feet back from the property line. And you can see in this rendering that we've kept the buildings, that the existing buildings, the historic buildings that are there. And you could see the two more orange colored brick building here on the corner is an infill building, which is only three stories, and later I'll show you how that relates to the buildings across the street. Then it goes back and it steps back, and then you can also see in the middle of the block, it steps back farther behind those existing buildings, about a little over 60 feet from the face of the street. Next. You keep going. Do I have? Oh, that's all the way to the end, yeah. We have plans and elevation.
Seems like it froze, the mouse is still showing.
I think there's a couple more renderings too. Okay, this is a rendering from Federal Street, the south elevation, the building on the left is King's Landing One, which is currently built, and our proposed building next to that, and as you can see, it's now a five-story building, and we started to do this in the last, we, we brought much more brick into the facade now. It's on the south elevation, the east elevation, and the north elevation, it's mostly brick. And we do to lighten it up at the top, we've got an architectural panel up there. And then at the bottom, we have glass from the retail along the bottom. Next. This is the elevation along East Avenue, or Fifth, Fifth Avenue, the east elevation. You could see what I was talking about on the corner, we've replaced that, the lobby, the glass tower, with a much more transparent, open balcony system. And then the building, the mass of the building actually starts about 30, 35 feet back from the face of the building on Federal Street, so you could see that five-story piece. And then it steps down the building, the first low building that you see is an existing building. The second building in was a one-story garage, is a one-story garage building existing, we'll be removing that and putting an infill townhouse there. Third building in is an existing building. And the fourth building in is an existing building. And then finally, we'll be adding a new three-story piece to the north end of our project. Next. And then this is the, similar to that rendering I showed you, King's Landing One is on the left side, and our new building is on the right, and you can see the way that the balconies are now, they don't pop out as much toward you as that glass tower did and kind of start turning the corner. And again, the building is, what we tried to do is, it's mainly brick, it's glass on the bottom to give it a lighter feel. And then we have a strong steel entablature that goes across, and then the next three floors of the building up in that middle section, you can see are all brick. On the left is kind of the, the tower section that would overlook the ridge, and that's four stories of brick. And then at the top, we have, we changed the material to those gray panels to lighten up the top of the building. So we have a strong base, a middle and a top, similar to a lot of the other historic buildings in Troy and down the street. Next. This is the west side of the building, which I guess some people call the rear of the building. This building is the side that faces King's Landing One, and basically, we're using the similar vocabulary to what's on King's Landing One. We use the brick to turn the corner and the panels, and then the panels continue all the way down the rest of the way on the backside of the building. That lower level is a series of brick piers and fences with the parking under the building. Next. And the north elevation, you can see at, on the left side is the Fifth, is Fifth Avenue, and it is only a three-story building there. It steps back and it goes up to five stories, but again, we've got four stories of brick with just that top floor being a different system, the architectural panel system. And then, again, this is set back more than 20 feet or about 20 feet from the lot line. So that fence would be a lot line between the church and our building, and then this side would be set back about 20 feet. Next. This is a little diagram that we did, you could see the buildings across. You could see the buildings across the street. This is a section through Fifth Avenue with a person standing on the east side of Fifth Avenue, looking back at the existing, one of the existing buildings. And you could see if you're on Fifth Avenue and you're looking back with the new building that we've set back, I'll show you that in the plan, it wraps around behind. It's about almost sixty feet back from our property line on Fifth Avenue. You won't be able to even see the top of that building from across the street. So you're really, you'll feel when you're walking down Fifth Avenue opposite those existing buildings that that is, that's your sight line, the top of the building there. Next. And this is, these are streetscape elevations. You've seen the one on the top. Again, King's Landing and the restaurant on the corner. And our building across the alley adjacent to that. The next, the middle rendering is a rendering of the new building with the existing buildings in the foreground and then the church on the right going down St. Avenue. And then the lighter section there is the part that's set back about sixty feet. What the drawing on the bottom shows is, and I think this is fairly significant, all our other schemes, I think, had a four story to five story mass that went all the way down to the property. And you could see the light blue are the silhouette to the buildings on the east side of Fifth Avenue. And obviously those existing buildings that are there and our new infill building are very contextual with that. So what we've got is a larger five story piece that is a predominantly federal avenue building, and then it turns the corner and steps down. And obviously the character of these existing buildings as it walks down Fifth Avenue are very similar and are existing to what's across the street and what's there. Next. This is the first floor plan and we'll blow up what Nick showed you. What's kind of cut off over there on the right hand side is the drive through. It's not a drive through, but it's the easement for utilities. And we would come in the back of the building into the parking. The shaded sections are the existing buildings with the exception of that second infill building. And all the way over to the left was the lobby. And we had switched the lobby from the Federal Street side and we tucked a small retail in there, about five hundred square feet. And just below that, we have a planter and landscaped area outside which has tables and is outdoor seating. And then our entrance, which is much more reduced now to the residential. You come into the lobby and the elevator stairs are in there. Okay, next. And this is a typical second and third floor. And you could see what the main difference here is, we always had a double loaded building. And now that we're keeping the existing buildings there shaded with about twenty-two feet between the back of those buildings and the face of the new building. So we basically have a single loaded building all the way around. We weren't afforded a double loaded corridor, which would have been nice from economical point of view. But you could see that that is set way back from the street and from the existing buildings. And I think we had eleven units per floor on the second and third floors. Next. The fourth and fifth floor shows that the pretty much similar configuration. You can see the in or the existing buildings down. But what happens is, once you get to the fourth floor, all the way over to the right, the north side is where we step back and we leave that that front portion of the building on Fifth Avenue is only three stories to relate to the existing buildings there. So this is basically the same configuration as fours, two and three. So that's the fourth and the fifth floor. And you want to talk about the view corridor? Okay, I'll talk. We had taken these quite a while ago and I think what we had done, this was back when the building had been, might have been seven story building. But we had gone out and photographed from different locations and the bottom inset is an aerial photograph of where that picture is taken. And you can see as you're looking down toward the bridge on Federal, you can't even see our site from that location. There was some concern that the building would block your view. And these, a series of these will show you what you can see and what you can't. But we have a six story building to the east of us that would block the view and the building, the federal comes out and bends. So if we're tucked back anyway, but you couldn't see it through that other building. Next, this is just farther up Federal. And you can see again, it's, you can't see our site. This is from all the way up and from the overlook, looking back down toward the river. And even without the trees, you can't really see our site. And that is looking back the other way toward or looking farther off to the north where you see the tower and obviously from that direction, we're totally blocked. And the same thing with that photo. So these were meant originally, this was the a building height study that we did. We are now about, our five story building is less than sixty feet tall now, or right around sixty feet tall. So you can see that contextually, there's obviously that the tower building is one hundred and eighty-three feet, which is out of context. But the other buildings are between, I would say, the average of the other buildings, seventy seventy-five feet or so. So we're we're below the height of most of the buildings around us. And certainly the buildings that are across the street to us on the south side or on the north side of Federal Street, south of our project. Next. And these are the revised aerial photographs. And you can see our building with King's Landing one to the left, that larger residential building to the east and then the tower. So and it is very contextual with eight and that five stories with the larger buildings across the street. And also you can see where these brownstones over here on the south side are three and a half, four stories. So it's not out of character with what's there. And again, we've loaded the taller portion of the building, more of the mass on Federal Street, or set it way back from Fifth Avenue. Next. And another view from the southwest. Next. And this is a view looking from a more bird's eye view, looking down. And one of the concerns, I think a lot, everybody seems to think that this the site in this building is much larger than King's one. And because you could see the narrowness of it, it's actually much narrower than King's one. And it sits in there. And if you start to look at the roof lines below our building on the east side of Fifth Avenue, you can see the depth of those is not, so our building is not atypical of what's in the neighborhood. Next. And that's just another view. In this view, it's a little bit blurry, but you can, you can see the existing buildings in the front and you can see how far the two story portion behind there, and it sticks up two stories behind the building is how far back that is Fifth Avenue. So those buildings along Fifth Avenue will read as independent buildings. It'll almost be like the back portion of our building is on the block behind that. Next. And that's it. Do you want me to talk about the historic report? I think I did a little bit. If this is the, this is the original, unless you want to make some comments about your spending the money on.
Next. So this is just a summary of what we're doing and where we are with the with Chipo and everybody. So we're preserving the existing original buildings on Fifth Ave. Like I said, the front portion, the one on Bridge, we're taking down the two story one. Again, buildings are not on the national registry. We're going to work with, we're still working with some salvage companies to go in and take very little that's valuable inside the buildings, like, you know, a rail or the a fireplace mantle, but most of it has all been redone through the years. So there's really no, not much value in there. We did a, we did a property condition assessment and historic summary, which we submitted to the board. And we did provide a phase one archaeological study, which from Chipo, we received that there's no impact archaeologically. And and then we did receive a letter and or Aaron actually received a letter from Chipo that says that there's no jurisdiction. Okay. The reason why we could we could, so what we've done, instead of, we've taken monies that we originally planned for the parking structure below. And instead of, instead of doing that, we're able to to rehab these these structures, right? So so that's why the project costs kind of stay the same. And that's the only reason why we could do it. Right? Next. So Alana, Alana will be talking about the traffic and parking analysis.
Good evening, Alana Moran with VHB. As Cosmo noted, we completed the traffic and parking evaluation for the proposed project. It's been discussed already, but access to the site is proposed via a one way entrance from King Street and then a one way exit onto Federal Street via that kind of little paper street known as laundry place. I'm going to go to the next one. One of the benefits of having a a project that reduces in size is that that's fewer trips. That rarely happens to me when I'm up here speaking. So the trip generation for the project is based upon fifty-two residential units and the six hundred square feet of generally retail space. It's estimated based on guidance and standards using Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, the latest edition, which is the eleventh, most recently published in September of twenty twenty-one. So three entering trips during the morning peak hour, nine exiting trips. And then during the evening peak hour, fifteen entering trips and ten exiting trips for the site. And those would be vehicle trips. The last part of this is really the parking assessment. So as noted, there isn't really a requirement for parking based upon the zoning code. But we did a quick assessment for you to know what the general parking demand might be. That's also based upon Institute of Transportation Engineers standards and guidelines. So as estimated, the project parking supply is twenty-eight off-street spaces, because there are so thirty-three space, thirty-six spaces that are kind of in that garage area, but some of those are already allocated for King's one. So that's down to twenty-eight kind of off-street spaces. There is fourteen on-street spaces right now. When Federal Street is kind of reconstructed, there will be four additional spaces, but we didn't include that in this table right here. And then there's also the proposal for rehabbing the corner of Jacob Street. So having a parking lot there with thirty-eight spaces. The project site is estimated to have a demand of about sixty-nine vehicles. So with eighty available parking spaces and sixty-nine spaces for demand, that actually is a net gain in the area of eleven parking spaces. And then the conclusion statement here is basically what I just said, which is twelve trips during the AM peak hour, twenty-five trips during the PM peak hour, that's about one additional vehicle trip, say every, you know, two and a half to five-ish minutes. This is way less than the DOT requirement for needing to do any type of off-site analysis, which is why this is just a quick trip generation summary. And then again, the project is anticipated to have a kind of a net gain in parking supply. And that trade-off is really based upon the ability to keep the buildings or add another layer of garage spacing. That's all I've got.
So let's take a quick look on the economic impact. This, these charts just essentially depict what, you know, what what people, how pre-tax income is is being spent usually. You know, housing, goods and services and other, including transportation. But the biggest thing is the job generation. So this project will obviously have some temporary jobs, fifty to seventy-five, right? And some permanent jobs in the retail. So these are, these are the numbers based on the mean wages. Next. And when we use, when you use those numbers and you you expected pre-tax income of the development, you could come up with an expect, expected annual purchase power of about one point two million. And some of that, a lot of that is going to be discretionary spendings and hopefully downtown Troy. Next. So just want to briefly touch on the compliance with Troy's comprehensive comprehensive plan. You know, this project does, this foster development of downtime downtown settings. We have a mixed use building. We are creating a raging, a different range and an upgraded housing opportunity, housing stock for the downtown. We foster distinctive, attractive communities with a strong sense of place. And and we are, you know, obviously we're we're creating a more, more, more activity and more vibrancy to the to the community. Again, some of the goals that are directly in Troy's comprehensive firm go to the economy and population, which this project does promote health and safety, green neighborhoods, which obviously this project does. Invest in mobility, accessibility, transportation and and support compact growth, which this project obviously does. Finally, some of the benefits. So we're putting another seventeen million, we already put a ton of money on King's one. It's a very successful project. We are consistent with the zoning and the land use plan for Troy. We are enhancing the neighborhood and the housing stock. We are providing vitality by creating more of a twenty-four seven atmosphere, especially on the corner. A new federal and and fifth. We are creating more project, more jobs. We are creating six full-time jobs in the retail. And we're, and we hope to that this will yield one point two million of new discretionary spending within the greater Troy community. We also anticipating obviously fifty to seventy-five thousand of building department fees. New parking lot at the intersection of Jacob and Fifth, which is a public benefit. And again, we are increasing the available parking to the community by eleven spaces. We are ending eighty parking spaces that is not required by code. All right, there's projects that the board has approved throughout Troy with no parking requirement, no parking at all. And we are actually ending eighty more spots that is not required. Next. In conclusion, you know, the project conforms to our zoning regulations. As you know, we could build sixty-two apartments by right, we're doing fifty-two. It does conform with the Troy Comprehensive Plan. And we feel at this juncture, we have addressed all the neighbors' concerns. We have addressed all the board's concerns. And and we we look forward to to moving forward with this project. This has been a, it's been a long process. And and I think our team, I know our team did a great job taking this project and really working at addressing every single comment. Thank you for your time and look forward to some of the comments.
Thank you. So I know there's some changes from the last time that we saw this. And obviously we have some new commissioners with us tonight who this better? So we have some changes from the last time this application was reviewed. And I know that we have some new commissioners with us tonight who weren't necessarily part of the prior consideration of previous iterations of this application. But I think in light of the fact that there have been a lot of public comments, including some received in writing prior to the hearing, might turn it over to the in writing prior to the hearing, might turn it over to the public for comment first and see if anybody is here to comment on the application tonight in person. So, uh, are, do we have any members of the public here to comment tonight? Okay, and, uh, if we can, I don't know if there's seats in the front row, but anybody who's waiting to comment, you can move up to the front row so that we know. And, uh, same as always, please state your name and address for the record. Try to keep your comments limited to no more than three minutes.
Okay, uh, thank you. My name is Dreya Lianza. I live at twenty-two, twenty-seventh Fifth Avenue, uh, just down the street from the, uh, proposed, uh, King's Landing. Um, uh, neighbors protecting neighborhoods. I'm a member of that group. We appreciate the improvements that have been made in the King's Landing to propose, or they have addressed some of the, uh, concerns that we had with it. Um, however, they have not addressed all of the concerns. There are a number of issues that still need to be resolved before we can consider supporting it. All of these have been thoroughly discussed. You all received, um, the report that we, uh, put together of all our comments. And so, uh, it's in full detail in that report. Uh, the things that we feel that we really need to have addressed are the issue of the eight parking spaces that was originally allocated to King's Landing have been removed from the original plan for King's Landing and reallocated to King's Landing Two. This requires a zoning variance. Um, using the, uh, the city of Troy lot at Jacob and Fifth for permanent parking is not acceptable to the neighborhood. We need to come to a consensus on parking issues. There's extensive, uh, discussion of this in the packet. We would like to see housing there, not yet another parking spot. Um, Shippo actually, uh, should be involved with these plans. Uh, there was at one point a dispute over whether or not they actually have jurisdiction on this. Yes, they do. Shippo needs to be, uh, uh, to review. Also, the local historic review board should review and approve the plans. One other thing that we have asked for a number of times is that we need to agree on the oversight of the construction. When Kings, when the original King's Landing was proposed, they proposed a very different building than was actually eventually built. We want to make sure that whatever is proposed is what is actually built in the end. So we need to agree on how that's going to happen because it, it didn't happen the first time. We have other suggestions and questions in the document that were, that was distributed yesterday that at least need to be acknowledged and answered. What we're asking is not insurmountable. Uh, if, if we can come this far, we can certainly go the last couple of yards. Uh, this is the first public hearing on this iteration of the proposal. It's still a preliminary stage and the issues that we've presented need to be resolved before, uh, we can approve, uh, this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hi there. I'm Paul Sacco. I'm at twenty-one, forty-eight Fifth Avenue. Um, a lot of my comments have been included in some of the materials or electronic materials we've submitted. So, uh, but I just want to call attention to what's happening at the corner. Um, I, I feel like the cutback that is proposed, you know, in this rendering, it's only got a single tree, seems to be out there. Uh, to me, that speaks to suburbanism, anti-urbanism. It's, if you're walking, you know, downtown Troy has buildings that go to the corner. And to me, that speaks of a city. And so I, I don't like buildings that just create little empty pockets, um, and don't feel like you're in a dense city. Uh, also Fifth Avenue is supposedly, or Federal is supposedly going to get, you know, a remake possibly. Um, and so again, like, it's going to get connected better to the denser, more built-up parts of downtown. And finally, um, that, the, the actual sidewalk at that intersection, um, has a lot of problems. And I know this isn't strictly, you know, planning commission, but since this, this is the first public hearing of this project, uh, it's a wide sweeping turn. It encourages cars to go too fast when turning Federal onto Fifth. Um, and even though I have problems with this proposal, what, what I would like to see is the city to remap the lot that's owned by the city at Fifth and Federal to bring it to an actual corner where the lines of the sidewalk meet. Uh, and then if this project goes through, look, it's giving more land to the developer, which, you know, but I feel like that's better for the, for everyone because it'll make a better intersection, safer crossings of Fifth Avenue, slower cars. Um, so if, you know, I don't know who's in contact with whom and what city departments do what, but, um, remapping that lot, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's the BDC or the LDC who owns it. Um, and then sort of extending the building to encompass that seems like a win-win for everyone. It's a win for the neighborhood. It would give the developer more floor space per floor. Um, the city might get a higher price for selling a lot. So if, I don't know how the process would, would begin to do that, but I think that's a pretty key improvement, and it would also affect the corner, and maybe we could build that. So that's it. Thanks.
Good evening. Barb Nelson, Director, TAP, two-ten River Street. Um, I think we also have a couple of folks that are Zooming, uh, attending by Zoom that wanted to say a few words. So let me just check on that for us. Um, I, I, as Dreya said, we've submitted a lengthy report and tried to track back on all of the prior comments that have been given to you, kind of give you our, our new take on it. Um, and I just want to, uh, commend the, uh, uh, the preservation of, of three existing buildings. The, uh, the prior proposal, uh, removed four buildings. This one removes only three. Uh, so the, the, um, scale, it, 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 it's really moving in the, in the right direction. Um, and we've touched base with a number of preservation, uh, architects, you know, and the architects in the preservation community around who had very strong opinions, uh, about those buildings. And they are, um, surprised and, and pleased to see the building staying, not because they are, you know, musicals or libraries, but because they are, um, good, solid, uh, context. And you can see how successful they, just keeping those, um, how successful it is in, in blending and, and really maintaining the context, uh, of the, of the community and helping it kind of feel more like, although they'll be rentals, it'll, it'll feel more like the homeowner, a traditional homeowner community than it was. Um, we hope to have a conversation, uh, with you at the planning table about the corner of Fulton and Fifth. It may sound incongruous that, you know, parking was such a, a serious, uh, impact on the neighborhood and yet dedicating one more lot to a dark black surface of, of heat sink. Um, we're afraid that if, if it does get improved, uh, that it'll just stay that way for too long. And, um, I personally, uh, TAP and a couple of other clients, I would like to bring you a proposal for homeownership opportunity to occur on that block. Things that are three stories high, things that are compatible with the neighborhood and do incorporate, um, some public parking in the back off the alley. Um, so we, I, we ask that you hold off on requiring that piece of the, um, project to be, um, followed through with, um, at this time. And, uh, I think that, that, well, I, I would also want to say that the architecture of the main building, you know, we're very pleased about the, the small buildings being saved, um, and the infill happening. Um, we don't, we don't want to be the designers of this, uh, of the building. There's a lot to be, um, really fine-tuned in terms of material and color. Um, so I would really hope that we'd look, rely on the advice of Shippo and of the, uh, Historic Review Committee. Whether they have jurisdiction or not, they are a great, uh, asset to you, um, as is the, um, the architects on your own commission. So, um, please look carefully at the materials and the colors. And again, whatever is approved at this level, it's got to be followed through, got to be followed through to the building permit process and, and, um, make sure that it, that it proves out. All right. Thank you.
Barb, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
One of the comments in the letter was related to the parking lot at the corner of Jacob Fifth Street, that the applicant's list of parcels didn't include the parking lot. Can you clarify that?
I think on the actual application, you know, the listing of the lots included in the review, that perhaps that was left out. I, I, I think it's a technicality.
Okay.
But it was, I, I, that wasn't, that was Joe's comment. So I, I think that's what he meant.
Thank you.
Did the applicant want to speak to that or? Sure.
That lot is not something that the applicant owns or is proposing to own. It's a city lot, and they're volunteering to pave it, which might just be a short-term thing for five years or ten years or, or two years, um, to help the neighborhood and create some extra parking at some point. It would be totally up to the city to develop that, to sell it, to, you know, build housing. We're not talking about a permanent use unless the city wants it, but Cosmo is willing to pay for that just because it would alleviate existing parking pressure.
Thank you for the clarification.
My name is Mark Menard, twenty-one, sixty-eighth Fifth Avenue, basically across the street from the development, down the block a little bit. Uh, I just want to second the concerns that Barbara talked about in that whatever you prove needs to go all the way through the permitting process, needs to be checked on, on, and made sure that what you actually prove is what actually gets built. Because it's not the case of what happened with King's Landing. And a lot of changes were made in the process of the building, that building compared to what actually got approved, and it doesn't look like what was proposed. And I gotta say, Cosmo, I worked in all of those buildings as a kid that you're preserving, and this is a much different proposal than what you have. Yeah. A lot of concerns have been addressed, but we need to trust that you're actually going to build what you propose.
Is there anybody else here in the room tonight who wanted to comment on the application? Okay, so then we'll look to see if there's anybody attending by Zoom. I'll just remind everyone that, uh, try not to repeat comments that have been made additionally. I mean, you can certainly say that you agree with something that somebody said previously, but try not to be repetitive in the interest of everyone's time.
It's Ronnie Shimam. I would like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, I too would like to thank the developer for the serious improvement over the previous plans. And as Mark said, the previous speaker, uh, I continue to have concerns based on the experience with the prior project. So we must require that we seek a rigorous review that will ensure that what is said and drawn is precisely what is constructed. The initial proposal was approved for fifteen percent to twenty percent student housing and the rest at market rate housing. King's Landing One consists largely of student housing today with separate leases for individual bedrooms consistent with dorm, living or rooming house. The applicant cannot be permitted another opportunity to change the number and types of units during the construction. What are the insurances that BDC will build according to the plans submitted and approved for the new project? And what agency of the City of Troy will oversee compliance with the approved plans for occupancy? I also have some concerns about the green space in the plantings. The site plan, it should explain the nature and size of the trees at the time of planting, the, uh, the time of planting and the perspective drawing should be representative of building at the time of completion. This should be explicit in the motion. If the project is approved, relevant departments of the City of Troy government need to be tasked with assuring the community that what is approved is what is being built. And, um, we would like to have this monitored by buildings and codes and have the information available to, uh, NPN and the community at large to ensure compliance by BDC. Thank you so much. I'm done.
Hi, I have a comment.
Yes, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Gemma Laura. I am the owner of Maven Real Estate Services. Um, one of our property addresses is two-two-four-five Old Sixth Avenue. Um, not to be repetitive with previous comments, but, um, I own or have under contract, uh, quite a bit of land around the parking lots on the corner, or the proposed parking lot on the corner of Jacob and Fifth. Um, I do not think that this is conducive for the neighborhood, and I don't think that that uh, proposed use is of highest and best, um, value for that land. Um, as expressed in the neighbors' comments, you know, there's already more surface lots in that neighborhood than necessary. Um, so that was, you know, that's basically my, my thought is that I'm, I'm completely against, you know, another parking lot, whether it is temporary or transforms into permanent being, um, provided into that, that area.
Thanks, Gemma.
Thank you.
We have one more, a person who wanted to comment on Zoom.
Yes, I, I'd like to. Um, my name is Joe Pham. I live at one-fifty-second Avenue in Troy. Um, I submitted testimony as part of the NPN package. And I just want to touch on the main points of what I dealt with, which is, uh, three items. The current application, uh, status, the nature of apartments and supporting documents for consultants. Um, on the status of the current application, uh, King's Landing Two is now a new project, and we are thankful for the change. This is the first truly significant change, and it vastly improves the project. Uh, the project appears to be, as, as has been the pattern since the very beginning, to come in with a complete EAF, uh, uh, paperwork, but not necessarily all the needed. Um, and in order that the, um, uh, possibility exists that, uh, this could be approved tonight. Now, we don't think that is even remotely possible on a project that's been around so long, that's had such a major change. Uh, this, this project, uh, all of the work that the NPN group has put together to talk about what's left to decide on, uh, needs to be considered, and it needs to be considered thoughtfully. Uh, so, so it's not because we don't want to see, um, the plan after reasonable, um, conferencing with, with, uh, parties interested, uh, and proper changes made. We can visualize this project being approved, uh, but not in a hurry. Uh, especially this project, not in a hurry. Um, during the prior proceeding, there were several prerequisites which we defined, which did not occur. Uh, these should now be properly addressed as part of a thorough review. Uh, the first is that as a new project, it needs to be submitted to Shippo. Uh, Shippo can't, you can't say whatever happened on the prior submission to Shippo. You can't say that applies to this completely different project. I think Shippo is going to have a much easier time getting through Shippo, uh, because the project is, is become what it has, uh, but, but it still has to go to Shippo because it's located in a National Register eligible district. The Planning Commission will also have to consider the project compliance with Shippo and the site plan, which was never passed, uh, approved, uh, on the prior submission. So that all has to happen again. Um, the agreements between the LDC and the applicant will need to be reconsidered. Uh, and of course, the eight-car parking lot, which we've mentioned, uh, several times. Um, the parking lot proposed on the corner of Jacob and, and Fifth, uh, Barb Nelson mentioned that that was a, an issue I brought up, and that's correct. Uh, and it seems to be, uh, heading in the same direction as the, uh, eight-car parking lot. Uh, oh, it wasn't part of the, the package, but it was part of the package. Uh, the question is, what is the nature? The question is, what is the nature of the parking lot on Jacob Street with respect to this parcel? They're going to voluntarily, I heard it and I'm, I'm just not clear about what this is, but it sounded like they're going to come in and pave a lot and, and take credit for 38 parking spots. Are they going to maintain 38 parking spots or, you know, what's going to happen here? It's a question. It's not a dagger. We're not here trying to kill this project anymore. We like to come to a conclusion that's suitable to everyone. So, so if in fact, this is a, a parcel that is not owned by the developer and will not be owned by the developer, then it needs to go to the site plan to do something to that other lot because it's not part of this request. If it is part of this request, then at the very least, it should show in a construction drawings of commensurate and, and comparative detail what it is they're going to do on that lot and how it's going to work afterwards. Are they just going to walk away from a big paved area? Or maybe so, but I don't see how you get credit for 38 parking spots. Furthermore, on the parking issue, the only thing I have to say is when the eight spots are taken away from King's Landing, that takes their 11-spot bonus down to a three. And if they lose the 38 spots because they don't qualify as parking officially for the project, that takes them to a very low place. So now, the second thing I want to talk about as briefly as I can, the nature of the apartments. BDC's latest submission includes 10 units in four buildings on Fifth Avenue and we are very grateful again that that has happened. Three existing and one newly constructed infill. The floor plans on the four buildings on Fifth Avenue are not detailed. There simply said how many bedrooms are in there. We would assume that there wasn't time enough where it's a more, it's, it's obviously a more difficult thing to figure out how you're going to make an arrangement in an existing building because so many parameters are already set up. But before this project is approved, the, the planning commission and the public have a right to see what the floor plans are going to be in the existing buildings and the one infill building as well. The second issue is one we brought up from the beginning. When the, the applicant himself talked about market and student apartments. We don't know what's happened to that distinction in this submission. Are there going to be market and student apartments? Are they going to be all student apartments? What constitutes a market apartment versus a student apartment? Whatever the nature of the, of the project of, of the apartments are at the numbers of split between one kind and another, if approved, should be a condition of approval so that they cannot say, oh, well, we changed our mind about how many of one kind and how many of the other. And then finally, and this is not a complaint or only about the project that was built and the project that is proposed. This is a problem, I think is a big problem that needs to be solved in the zoning ordinance and I said it before. These apartments that have separate leases and deadbolts on the bedrooms and so on are not apartments because they are not a household living together. They are strangers living in separate rooms. And the zoning ordinance should treat that as a separate thing, not necessarily where it should or shouldn't be allowed. That's up to the city to decide, but these are not qualified as apartments. If you look at the definition of apartments and you realize that there may be a three-bedroom unit, three people who never met each other and will come and go at different times. I think that's a matter that needs to be corrected, not because of Cosmo and, and BDC, but they're doing it because everybody else is doing it. And finally, support documents from consultants. I have to, I'm, I'm reluctant to say things about what happened in the past, but let's just say that some of the information was self-serving and invasive. The, every time there was a, a mistake made, it was a mistake that leaned in favor of the applicant. And naturally, that's pretty common when you're hiring somebody to do it. If, and I don't know that they are, but if there are other studies that the planning commission would call for in reviewing the, this project, I think that they should be prepared by third-party experts not connected to the parts, project. And the cost of these projects, studies should be borne by the developer. There's a, there's a, quite a bit more, but it's, it's less of the more significant things in, in our testimony. So I just wanted to cover them in public. I wanted to thank the public, the planning commission again for their behavior. Everybody's careful consideration of this project, whether, whatever conclusion they came to. And I feel a real good sense that a lot of improvement has happened to this project and I thank everybody involved.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who are here on Zoom who want to comment? Okay, well then I'll turn it over for Commissioner comments. Oh, send me off the room, sorry.
Thank you. This is Silva Menard. I'm on the 2100 block of Fifth Ave. And I just had a couple of concerns about the lack of details on the layouts for the current buildings. The three existing and the single infill, the fact that there's a lack of detail kind of leaves me wondering how much demolition will be done at the back of the existing buildings? It wasn't quite clear with the drawings as to how much of the rear by laundry place would have to be removed in order to make room for the back of the building. And similarly to Ronnie and Mark, how much is going to get changed as soon as these abilities are actually done? How much of the feasibility studies have been done on those existing buildings in the infill layout? What if you demolish the back of the building and it's no longer viable to stain front of the building? And so we end up getting a full demo and we're back to 62 units and it's five stories on Fifth Ave. And it might seem crazy, but if somebody told us how King's Landing one apartments will be rented by the bedroom by the semester, the student housing, I'm not sure anybody would have suspected that. Would also like to see TAP's housing proposal for Fifth and Jacob over more blacktop. I'm not a fan of the blacktop. For heating and neighborhood viability. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else from the public who wanted to comment tonight? Either in person or on Zoom? Okay. So now I'll turn it over for Commissioner comments. Who wants to start?
Right into it.
Okay, better? Okay, sorry. In regards to the roof line of the new build, your, your renderings don't show any kind of bulkheads or HVAC kind of stuff. It'd be good to know how high that is going to extend up. And I did, I too had questions about the plans for the older buildings, whether or not they were going to be only the facades or, or what kind of, there's just no details on what you're doing there and I think we need to see that. And also, it's kind of unclear to me if there's some kind of an interior atrium or something between the end of the old buildings and the beginning of the new build behind it. It looks like there is, but again, that is kind of unclear. So I was just wondering if that could be a little more delineated.
Yeah, Eric, Eric, can you pull that up? The first floor site plan that they provided?
Well, while he's doing that, I would like to say that this is a great, great, great improvement and I'm so glad that you are incorporating the existing buildings and overall, I think it's something that comes very much close to something that's much better for Troy.
There you go, 21 or 22.
Can you go to floor one? It's parking. One up.
So I see the parking on that level, but so that's going to, that takes up that atrium space. So it's just going to be blank space on the floors above it, just air, airspace?
Yeah, I, I share that concern.
Yeah, absolutely. We're going to have a lot of questions for you.
Get that, on this slide, you can see that that's correct. It's parking down below on the first floor.
Is there roof cover over top of those spaces? So that those parking spaces are open to the sky above and there's, I think you called it your utility corridor? Is that what you were referring to?
No, the utility corridor is all the way over to the right.
Okay.
That comes in off a laundry place. They, the reason that, I mean, we did end up not coming all the way out to Fifth Avenue, but National Grid, what a, a transfer switch and and transformer in the back there and they won't let us use that space. We could go over it like we did in the previous proposals, but we still have to keep that open to 14 feet high or something.
That's on the north end though, right?
Yep, that's on the north end. So if you're looking right behind the shaded areas there, there, there is a line there. You can see that text. That text, if you go to the next plan, might be a little easier to see. Right there, you can see that, that gap between the buildings and then that one wall where the corridor is with the windows, that's all the way open.
Some sort of covering something you had considered?
We hadn't considered it. I mean, it's, it's a possibility, but we wanted to get as much light down into there as we could.
Can I tie into this question? Okay, so for that space, I, I continue to request that you guys do something with the roof space and I think you could use that as mechanical courtyard. If you were to put either bracing down or a roof space over top of those ground floor garage spaces, cover it and use it as structural slab for, for mechanical units and, and use it as a, I mean, it's interior to the entire entire structure. So it's not, it's not in the view of any of the units. I think that you have basically a cube of space or a rectangle of space that's not being used. And if you just use. Go ahead.
It, it is in view of the existing buildings, the rear of the existing buildings. So we would, and again, most of the mechanical are small individual units and we envision those really up on the upper roof. And there you would have them. So the people on the second and third floor would be overlooking that of the existing building. So that's the only reason why we usually, whenever we have a lower section of the building, the building above, we almost never put mechanicals there because you look out your window and you hear the units and see them. We could explore, I mean, if you, we could explore that if that.
Well, to that point, we still, we definitely need to see more detail for the three buildings, the existing buildings and the infill space to know maybe what rear elevations of those look like, materials.
Sure.
And floor plans.
Okay. Yeah, I'll see. I think some sort of buffer there would be, would be nice, but not mechanicals, as you had pointed out. Makes sense.
Okay.
And then did you want to address Suzanne's comment about the other mechanicals? You said they'd be on the, on top of the main building's roof?
That's what we usually do. We usually put them up on the main because they're, they're small units. So, and again, they're five stories up. We would cluster them middle and you would really never see them. What you would see, and I'm, I'm sorry if we didn't show, but I thought we did lightly. Maybe they don't show that well, but the only things that we would have were required by code. If we do not use the roof for assembly space or something like that, which I, I don't know, we haven't gotten that far yet, but I don't think we really will be. And if we did, it would be a small space over probably more toward Federal Street. We're required to have one stair that goes to the roof by code for egress. And the elevator, if we were to use that space, would have to be handicap accessible. So the elevator would go up. And if we do not use that space, the current elevators that we use mostly and are out there are not the old big cable elevators. So the bulkhead only sticks up if you're not going, you know, up to the roof, sticks up about five to six feet. And the stair bulkhead would stick up about seven and a half, eight feet. So we would have the, and it would probably be this stair on Federal that would be clustered over on the taller part. So, and it would be more toward the, the north side, back and about, and I'm looking at it right now at the top, my head would be about 50 feet back or 40 feet back from Fifth Ave.
Did you either, want to continue? Did you want to address, the gentleman named Paul had a, a comment on the corner of the building. Did you want to address that comment?
My only comment would be that I would agree with him historically, architecturally, from a mass and scale point of view. Well, we have been chipping away at that corner since our first meeting because I think it was I, I, when we first came in here, we said that Federal Street is the larger scale building, faster move, or street, the faster moving street is more of a monumental architectural, larger massing street. And that would be in, in the comprehensive plan and just in general planning, the larger streets get bigger buildings. But there were many comments in the beginning that the building is too big on the corner and should be softened. And we've always even tried to turn that corner and step down. So yeah, that would be, my comment was that that's been developing over time to be less monumental and more of the fabric of, of Fifth Ave.
Suzanne or, or I'll put Sarah on the spot. Do either of you have comments on that? The corner of the building there stepping back?
Yeah, I agree. It'd be nice if it was.
I have an idea for that. I was thinking that perhaps a better use of that corner space. First of all, you guys, the, the last submission you guys had, what I thought was commendable, this one definitely deserves a pause, but the specific to that corner space, I think a better use might be for cafe space for the retail. I'm not sure any of your plans, if you're thinking that's going to be at food or restaurant type space or more so commercial goods type, types retail.
If you look at the first floor plan, we've, we're taking up as an entrance, we've significantly reduced the entrance. The main entrance.
The first floor again.
Vortacular the entrance on Federal Street to the apartment. So we've got, we've only taken up about, and we did not want to come in off Fifth Avenue. So if you can, if you can see that. Pointer here, that little area right there.
This, yeah, that shows up differently in the submission set I had. That's exactly what I had in mind. Gotcha.
Oh, okay.
That's definitely different. And the, the elevation view from the corner also showed a tree in the, in the view on the corner there. That's not there. And I think this is a much better use of that space.
So obviously you'd have to go back and look into this, but if, if you did extend that corner and fill up that space with structure, potentially you could make, still keep that as patio spaces open.
You could. I, you know, I went back to saying, you know, architecturally, theoretically, I agree that pushing it out, but I, but I also do agree with some of the original comments that we are turning it corner. We have two contexts, one on Federal Street, one on Fifth Avenue. And I actually like the way the building does turn the corner because it does give you that sense of something that's transitioning and it's happening and it does create an outdoor space. If we push that out, we would significantly reduce that, that space. So it was another opportunity to get some green or use on the corner.
I would be curious to hear Commissioner Wangar's comments on that corner, but I don't know if we'll get them now. I, I did see in the, in the neighbors' concerns, they were talking about the turning gradient specifically on, on Federal and, and Fifth and Northwest corner. That's something that I, I also share that concern. That turning gradient that's shown in the plan, this might be a question for Nick, but that turning gradient looks like it's larger than the turning gradient on the northeast corner. So that, that I thought was a bit strange. The neighborhood. The neighborhood, one of the, the neighborhood group's comments talked about tightening up both turning gradient. And I think that would be an improvement that would address walkability concerns in the community. So if, if the developer, the project team is considering, I'm assuming they're making improvements to corners there. You know, new curbing, ADA accessible curb ramps on both sides, I would expect could be included in the project. And then, you know, after construction is complete, adding, restriping the crosswalk. Obviously that's going to be degraded from construction, I would anticipate. So site improvements like that or offsite improvements like that would be appreciated. And, and I'd like to see those in the plans if possible.
Now, that is a question for Nick, but I think that he does have more. And it just does a point for our architectural plans, since these are the largest scale ones, the landscape architects and site architects never real, never really let us put the sidewalks in. So the curb that you see there on our drawings.
No, I know that's not on your.
Is just a property.
Yeah, I understand that.
But I do.
I'm referring to Nick's, Nick's site plan. Thanks.
Can I make a comment?
Is that, is that?
Can I just briefly make a comment? I, I can't hear if that's okay.
We haven't moved on from, from public comments, Joe, but.
I, I just wanted to, I just want to point out that Federal Street traffic is heading north. And the northwest corner is not going to, to need any kind of turning radius that's as large as that. It could be bumped out beyond the parking as a, as a bump out because the cars turning into it from Federal Street heading east are going to come around. And the cars heading to it from Federal Street heading west don't care about what happens at that corner. There's a real capacity there to change the nature of that, that corner, however you want to do it. Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Any additional commissioner comments?
I have someone just wanted to finish. Uh, another quick comment I had was on, on the buffer between this property and the church. I see the, the new parking spaces being proposed there on the north side of the structure. And I understand the, the need for those, but previous iterations of the plan did show a major screening or there's some greenscaping there that, that was between the church's property and the development site. So, you know, if there's some landscaping that could be included there, understand the, the, with it or the, the length of that bay is probably pretty tight, but if you can include some sort of landscaping, whether that's again onsite or offsite, I think that would be a good gesture to, to mitigating the impact of the parking area right up against the other property. And I think as a, as a group and hopefully with the developer, we should continue the conversation around the lot on, the offsite lot on, on Fifth. There's a lot of public concern around that. And I think there needs to be a lot more done to understand what the, the future of that lot holds.
Yeah, I do think this is something we need to discuss, but let's first see if there's other comments that commissioners want to bring up before we dive into that. I'll go if somebody else wants to. Andy, I wanted to start with a point of clarification on this. So given that the submission does have an entirely new number, is there a distinction or a clarification you can make between whether this is a truly new submission for us or not? And I guess the first part of my question should be, what was our previous action or prior action we took? Because I thought we had issued a neck deck.
Sure. Um, so two things. You, you didn't issue a neck deck. We were stalemated on filling out the form because of one recusal. And there were four instances on going through part two of EIF, primarily on aesthetic resources, historic resources, transportation and consistency with community plans, where the four board members deadlocked two-two on the size of potential adverse environmental impacts. So that's where the project from a process standpoint stopped. And that's as far back as March of 2021. Since that time, there have been revised plans submitted. But no, we have not revisited the secret process or consideration the EAF since that time. So currently, the, the application itself, from a process standpoint, has, still has to go through for a secret determination. And, and we were deadlocked at the time. So the next step in the process would be when you believe you've, they've, you've received all the changes or modifications that you requested that the applicant is willing to provide. At that time, we would have to reengage in the secret process and go through the EAF again.
Okay, so part of my asking is for the benefit of NPN who's asked and Joe who commented that this is a new project. So can you directly address that?
And, and I disagree with that analysis.
Thank you.
Um, it is my opinion that this is a modification to an existing site plan application that has been modified a number of times previously. But irrespective of it receiving a new application number, I'm not sure how that process works or why it receives one. It's my opinion that this is a modification and a revised request from an existing application that goes back to the original submission. I, I would also point out that if you look at the application materials that were submitted with this iteration, the description specifically says, as shown on the revised site plan. So it's a revised site plan, revising the previous one. The cover letter from Mr. Lapper starts off, "On behalf of BDC Group, in accordance with items raised by the Planning Commission members of the public, we are hereby providing project modifications to assist the commission in rendering a secret determination." Further, it says, "Attached are revised architectural rendings and a revised site plan." Further, it says, "As shown on the revised site plan." The project narrative submitted with this most recent submission from Advanced Engineering, Nick Pasta, clearly states project narrative, City Troy County Rensworth, July 2020, which is the original submission date, revised May 2022.
That, that'll suffice for me.
So based upon all of that documentation, and, and there is more, the applicant has submitted it with the intention of it being a revision to his existing site plan application. And I think the totality of circumstances supports that position.
Would I be correct in extending that line of thinking to the SHPO aspect of this? In that, given this is a revision, they do not need to go back to SHPO for a reevaluation, even with the magnitude of change to the proposed construction on those historic register eligible building?
Not, not to my knowledge. I believe there are documents in the record which we all should review before taking act, any further action on this that set forth the correspondences between, I don't remember if it was SHPO and Aaron or SHPO and Commissioner Strickman, but there was a recognition, I recall at one point, that they disclaimed jurisdiction. And, but then they had comments, but it was my recollection that they disclaimed jurisdiction. So I do not believe that it, it does need to be resubmitted to SHPO a, as had been stated by one of the, the speakers.
Okay. Just to clarify on the, on the SHPO. The SHPO does not have jurisdiction when a project does not require a state permit. And that was the point of contention. This, this project does not require any state permitting. So therefore, SHPO's review is not required. SHPO did communicate that if the planning commission had questions and wanted to reach out to them for advice, fine, but they don't have any regulatory authority over, over the project itself.
Okay. I think for secret purposes, they're what's considered an interest agency, right?
Not, correct, because they're not providing a type of approval or something.
Right.
So I have a point of information. I think it's a correction to what was said. The process was not deadlocked. The board deadlocked on a negative declaration under C-GOR. An environment which would have obviated the need for an environmental impact statement. The developer could have continued the process by providing that full environmental review is what I recall happening, but other preservationists have cited.
That, that, that's an incorrect analysis of the secret process.
Okay.
We have Commissioner Wangar who has some comments on the app.
Oh, unless, sorry, Roddy.
I do still have some more. So.
I mean, waiting until Roddy's.
If you want to jump in.
No, no, go for it, Roddy.
Just hit my face on the mic. Anyway. The other things I wanted to make comments on, so I have one serious objection with the project, which is the parking lot at the, that, that's proposed, especially given that it's not developer owned. I, I do find it a little disingenuous to count it as part of the parking analysis, given that this won't be permanently owned and maintained by the developer. I don't know that you can count it towards the parking contribution. That said, I'm also aware that there is no parking space requirement of this development. And therefore don't find it to be a critical component to your proposal, but I would leave it out personally. I, I also think it's worth commenting to the NPN group that there's a little bit of inconsistency in the argument to say, we think there's a parking issue here, but we don't want this parking lot created. And furthermore, that we would suggest housing get built on that space, just adding more density and pressure on the parking situation. I think there are better uses for that space. I think that the community in that area has, has been pretty, pretty staunch and vocal that, that that is what they want to go in that space. So if the purpose of, of doing that voluntarily is to placate the community, it's not having that intended effect. I have some wish list items. I, I do like the material choices being used. I would like to see some more brick, even on the west elevation, maybe to the shadow line of King's Landing one. And then, as always, I implore you to activate your rooftop space and use it for tenant, tenant gathering or community events for, for the tenants, you know, only accessible for them. Pergalot, some, some, you know, rooftop furniture for people to entertain family when they come over and have an outdoor space to use. I didn't hear a lot of discussion on the retail space. I would like to see more on the layout for that. Where if, for instance, if, if it's going to be a commercial kitchen space or kitchen space and I don't know, I'd like to know where the exhausts would be located. And then another comment is that some of the three bedrooms seem to be very cramped, low square footage. So I am curious what the square footage for the three bedroom units are. And then last is a comment for the commissioners. We, we definitely need to discuss a, a mechanism for, for consistency in construction, holding, holding the approved plan to, to what actually gets built. And I understand that that's a function of the building department and code enforcement and the engineering group. But if, if that didn't work on King's Landing one, we should talk about options or additional safeguards for, for this project. Overall, I'm very much in favor of it. And I think that what you've, what you've brought here is, is a great presentation. Thanks, Roddy. Sarah, do you want to weigh in?
Thank you, Anthony. I, I would concur with much of what Roddy just shared with a couple of exceptions. The first is whether, whether practical, logical or not. I, I am. I am not feeling as though parking should even be part of the conversation. I think that it's not a requirement. And since we discussed parking a year ago, thirteen months ago, I've actually moved in, in this particular direction of wanting less parking. And I, I think that even if temporary, a, a gift of improvement of a city-owned lot is just that. It's a gift. I don't think that this applicant should be compelled to provide parking. I, I could be wrong, but I don't think that a shortage of parking will deter people from moving to Troy. I think people are creative and will find their way around a, an apparent shortage of parking. The only other point I'd like to make is that I think, and, and I agree, and there's, and there was that significant conversation about the activation or, or purpose of the corner of Federal and Fifth. And, and I just agree. I think it should be activated. I'm, I am skeptical that retail space will, will stimulate activity. And I, what I'd really like to see is some, some residential amenity in the lobby that allows us passersby to see that people are really living there and enjoying living in this building somehow and how that can flow in and out of the building and, and even activate through benches and really creative lighting and thoughtful planting that small plaza just outside the front door. My fear is that a vacant retail space will do the opposite there.
Lighting was a comment I wanted to make too, Sarah. Thank you.
Great conversation in the room. I'm sorry I'm not there. And I really applaud the applicant for taking such, such dramatic measures to meet the community. Thank you.
The other wish list item I had would be balconies on the north elevation on the church side. I'm not sure if it makes sense to you there, but I noticed now that you've pulled the, that, that building line back, right? From the church, you now have a little bit more space to play with. It might make sense to, you know, increase value on the. Go over National Grid thing.
Please, man.
I'd like to say something. Is this on? Okay. And as a person new to this process, this is all a bit overwhelming, but the degree of faultfulness that goes into these conversations and in the plan is clearly impressive. And I, I'm really pleased to be in such company. I had some thoughts. I, I concur with the idea of parking is not required. I don't know why it's occupied so much of the conversation. And maybe that's because I don't understand the historical circumstance. But given the controversy over the, the construction of the offsite parking lot, I, I would just take that off the table. And my thought, my wish would, would be take that money and use it for that rooftop utilization that would enhance the living accommodations for the people who would, who would be in that complex. And or addressing a, an amenity for the tenants on the first floor in that corner. Use the money saved from paving a piece of land that nobody seems to want you to pave and use it for something that would enhance the prep. That's, that's what I have there. Nobody. And, and I don't know if this is the forum, but it seems to me that we've heard a number of people looking for assurances that we're not going to have a, a utilization of the apartments as a dormitory space. I, I would like to hear what can be done to address that, if anything. And whether the, the applicant has any thoughts on it or whether we're going to get a sense of a commitment of utilization of the apartments. Is that, is there something that can be discussed?
We can get into that in a minute because there, there are some questions there as far as the limits of our authority. We are looking at things like the number of units and the density of the proposal. Technically speaking, even the floor plans of the units are not really part of the site review. We do ask them of applicants frequently and applicants do provide them to us. But strictly speaking, if they alter the floor plan, that's not necessarily something that's out of, inconsistent with the site plan that we approved. Is that correct, Aaron?
Correct. The, the, as far as the existing zoning code, the number of bedrooms is not a measurement of density. The number of units is a measurement of density. The planning commission doesn't have the purview to review density. If they meet the density that's required by the underlying zoning, then that's, that's that.
Or for example, what their leasing practices are. We don't.
Correct. As far as who they are renting to, that's not even a topic that can be discussed. Okay? Okay. When it comes to identifying whether this is a multifamily development or something else like a dormitory, what the building department looks at is really the number of bathrooms and kitchens, the way the hallways are laid out, the entry ways to suites, and things of that nature. So Kings One met the planning commission approval. Actually, they they built two less units and were allowed. They built more bedrooms than they had initially planned on at the time, but they did not build more units. Also, the fact that they rent to students, again, is not a topic of discussion. You can't discriminate against renters, right? There may be a a plan that you guys see in the future at some point that may have special financing involved in it, right? It might be senior housing or low-income housing, and there's some special financing that's tied to that. That's a different matter. When you're talking, everything else that you review is is considered market rate. When you're talking about just market rate, traditional apartments, you cannot consider those things.
And I know that there was one member of the public who specifically was talking about a distinction between market rate and student housing, which to my mind is saying that could be part of the zoning
It's the same thing, right? The apartments available for rent, if a student rents it, you might call it student housing. It doesn't change that it's just housing, right? When we talk about, again, special specialty types of housing, it has to do with whether or not there's federal or state grants or federal or state subsidies or something along that nature, which, again, you would not be able to discriminate a project based on the fact that they are accepting those those grants or waivers or or subsidies or what have you. You don't get to take that stuff into consideration.
And although the current zoning code does have a definition of dormitory, it says, the the definition specifically says it has to be used exclusively by students and it has to be owned by the school or college. So neither Kings One nor this proposal would meet that definition as a dorm.
Does that now answer your question?
All right. It provided some light to it, thank you.
Did you have other comments?
No, I'm set for now, I've heard a lot.
Well, thanks to all the commissioners. I I agree with a lot of what the commissioners said in response to this. I also think this is a great improvement. I I think the applicant too for responding to a lot of the community and planning commission feedback that's been given over the last couple of years. This has been under consideration in various iterations. I didn't want to clarify one thing as far as process that Andy had said. He did point to the fact that this is revised as July 2020. And I think as a procedural matter, it really is a different application than July 2020 since we had reached a positive declaration in March 2021. There was been a new application. We reached the stalemate that we were discussed in, I think it was September of 2021.
August, I believe.
August, yeah, right around that time. So about a year ago. And I, I would have to check the notes, but I think that we went through the whole secret process, declaring ourselves lead agency from square one a second time to go through that again with the with the new application. So at the very least, there is some discontinuity there as far as the process is concerned. You know, it is in some senses, just various iterations of the same proposal.
I I think, though, what is consistent is that your original declaration of lead agency, your reestablishment of lead agency when it was resubmitted. I think that reestablishment is still currently in effect. I I don't think you need to re-declare and and send out the interested and involved again. I think this is a a reiteration or or modification in response to comments from the reestablished lead agency application.
Well, would it be fair to say that considering there's a 2022 application number that we might declare ourselves lead agency just to, in case that raises any issues as a procedural matter?
Well, I I I think that would change the procedure. That that would be a per se recognition that it's a new application. And it would require that the declaration then be recirculated to all the agencies and departments, the interested and and involved agencies, which is a step that I I don't think is necessary in light of the fact that this is a modification to an existing application.
And it may not be necessary. I'm just suggesting we might be do that just to sort of cross every T and dot every I and make sure that we're not misstepping in any way.
It 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 would be within your authority if you choose to do that. But what I'm saying is, in my opinion, it's not legally necessary.
Understood, thanks. The one other thing I would just add to my comments, you know, I second a lot of the comments around parking. Like Sarah, I don't think that, well, I mean, as a matter of the law, under the current zoning code, there is no parking requirement. I think a distinction that maybe the newer commissioners do need to appreciate is that while the zoning code doesn't require the applicant to require any parking, it can be part of the seeker review process. It might be an impact on the neighborhood regardless of the fact that the zoning code doesn't require it. Well, so whether or not that should be something that causes us to make a positive declaration considering that it isn't required by the zoning code is is an open question, but we can certainly consider it. Certainly, members of the public have brought it up. But I I do sympathize with your remarks, Roddy, that there's an inconsistency if members of the public are simultaneously saying they don't want another service parking lot in the neighborhood and also demanding that this project is going to have a negative impact because it'll create increased parking demand. I tend to agree that I don't really want another service parking lot in the neighborhood. And if if the city-owned lot is at some point put to some other purpose, then parking, I think that would be great. It also doesn't seem like it's strictly speaking part of this application because it's a city-owned lot. But then maybe we should just remove consideration of any added benefit from paving that lot from from what we're considering, so.
I I have an idea or a comment regarding that that public benefit that they're attempting to create in that area. And if you look just kitty-corner from that lot, there's a public space that's known as Columbus Square. It's been neglected in in some capacity, but there have been improvements the city has made to traffic flow in that area. And there, right now, there's just concrete barriers blocking off some of that space. So, you know, you could potentially get more on-street parking by creating a nicer curved area over there, maybe, maybe two or three more spaces, potentially more. And if if the developer is actually looking to make this a more livable, walkable community, that might be a better use of a public benefit or or area that they're trying to enhance. It'd be that that kitty-corner space right over there. So that might be a a good place to direct some attention.
Are you talking about this?
Can you tilt it up a little? No, no. If you zoom out it's it's the same intersection of Jacob and Fifth, just diagonal across the street.
Here, maybe. Okay. Jacob and Fifth, over here. This?
Jacob.
Yep. So so that is the lot that they're talking about, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just, it's across the street, not diagonal.
Right here.
So, yeah, so if they if they wanted to, you know, make permanent changes to that space, again, I think they could actually add on-street parking in that way. And then they would also create a, a, you know, dynamic public space that would enhance the community as well. Ozma, are you familiar with this this area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make a point of information? Um, that particular spot there, the bit where there's the little thing between King Street going up to Fifth Avenue along the side of Columbus Square, that used to be open and people used to zoom up from getting off of the Green Island Bridge and just kind of barrel right on up through Fifth Avenue. The way that they have it blocked off now is great because cars can't barrel up like that. They make the little jog and it considerably slows the traffic. So I really appreciate that being there. I had at one point suggested instead of blocking off that entire part of the block to put a barrier in the middle of the block and have parking in that spot there. And I had talked to a number of residents and they said, yeah, that would be a good idea. Use that spot even if, you know, as as a parking area because it's just unused now. So, you know, that that had been talked about in the neighborhood.
Thank you. I think the tricky thing is then getting cars in and out of there. But if you did curb that that entry point, it would become a formal on-street parking space.
As you know, it's an unfinished project. We're getting there.
Well, it could, it could get there quicker.
It could, it could.
All right. Anthony, can I ask one more question?
Of course.
I guess a question for Eric. Did you have any comments from other departments, fire, police, code, anything like that? Thank you.
All right, so then the question to the commission is whether we feel like we're in a position to take an action. And I know there's been a lot of great comments. You know, I would prefer for taking any action on seeker, seeing if the applicant can respond to those comments so we can have something. You know, this looks like a great first proposal. I think there's been some feedback that could hopefully tighten it up in certain ways and strengthen it. And I would prefer that we wait until we see those adjustments before we take any action.
I do have one more question for the applicant.
Of course.
There was a suggestion made to talk to O'Neill, what is it? O'Neill Apartments and 500, let me find it. I'm trying to find it quickly. O'Neill Apartments or 500 Federal Street to use some of their parking. Have you guys had any conversations with those property owners? Is that something you'd be willing to do or? See if you guys, just one last ditch effort to address some of the parking concerns of the community. I mean, again, it doesn't, it's not something we're going to be able to require. I just would suggest a consideration.
I'd agree with your your point, Anthony. I think this is a a positive, a step in the right direction. But I think seeing those details on paper would be very helpful and appreciated.
All right, well, at the risk of angering city staff but having to renotice things, if it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and declare ourselves lead agency again, or at least propose that we do, take a vote just to avoid any questions about that in the future. I'm just saying, I'm going to propose that we declare ourselves lead agency again, just to avoid any questions in the future that we didn't take that step. Correct. We'll we'll reconfirm that we are reconfirming our earlier declaration of lead agency on the previous application.
To me, that almost invites questions of whether or not this is a new, a new
And and again, in my opinion, it's not a new application and you are currently lead agency. You've been lead agency for a while. It's it's been held in abeyance, but you currently still are lead agent.
So I move that we just reaffirm our earlier declaration of lead agency on the previous application by this applicant. If we have a second.
Is that something we can actually vote on?
Right, the point of clarification, the reason why there was a number was a mistake. That's why we
Because why?
It was a mistake. It was just we we pulled a new number, not not realizing that it was essentially just a I mean, I can understand it seems like a radical difference, but it was really a slightly different footprint of a building and saving a few structures to address, you know, comments that had been provided. So the fact that it was issued a new number is, it does, if it's not a new application, we haven't received a new application, we haven't received any new fees.
If that's the case, then then I withdraw the motion. We can leave this aside. So then, if that's the case, all that we need to do is table this either indefinitely or do you feel like you'll be ready to come back at next month's meeting?
Yes. So what what?
Just, I just wrote some notes. So what we're going to do for next month's meeting for the new submission, we'll update the EAF. We'll update the renderings. We'll take away the parking lot on Jacob and Fifth. We will develop the corner of Federal, Fifth, better. We will put some floor plans for the existing buildings, but it's, they're at the schematic level. Okay? We that's it. That's all, I mean, pretty much. We'll take a look at the that space, that atrium level. We'll probably include in the renderings some activation of the rooftop closest to Federal, okay? As we did on Kings One. We will take a look at the at the retail space and see if it could be a mixed retail slash, you know, tenant use space. We can't, we can't develop the retail space further because we don't have a tenant. But we do for, we do, it's 600 square feet. You're not going to get a restaurant in 600 square feet. You're not going to get a kitchen in 600 square feet. You're probably going to get some sort of a cafe. That's not a bad idea because then the tenants will be able to use it as well, right? And maybe it'll be like a self-serve cafe or something. We'll see, we're we're toying with some of the ideas. But it'll be flexible enough if we have a third-party provider to come in and activate it as a cafe. We'll have the space on the corner, you know, show show tables and some more landscaping. I'll talk to George about the the entrance into the building. And then I don't think we're going to be able to put landscaping between our building and the church just because there's not enough, there's there's not enough real estate for driving, right? And that, then you're eliminating more par parking. But we could figure something out with the church where we could help them improve some of that bound, you know, the boundary. We'll talk to O'Neill Apartments to see if they could help us with some parking. And that's it.
Okay, that sounds great.
Would you be able to show the bulkheads where they would be and how high they might appear from the street if they are invisible on the street?
Yeah, well, we developed that plan that 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 George showed us where there was a section through Fifth Avenue and and just how, you know, like a vision.
Site core?
Yeah, a site, a site. So I don't know how much more we could do there. The only thing we could do is is do a plan on on the proposed rooftop area that we that we want to develop.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, and I I agree with that.
And then I just wanted to see if there was a turning gradient changes that we could make to that engineering side plan.
So that's a little tricky, right? All agreed, all agreed to Mr. Farmer's comment about traffic should not impact that, that. But that's something that we would have to, you know, talk to engineering to see what kind of jurisdiction we have in doing something like that.
Right.
I think that's something Aaron can help you with.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Yeah, I think talking to this, talking to the city would be appreciated, you know, with understanding that there's a constraint there that the city would need to move as well. Yeah, southwest corner of
It loo, it looks like to me, once the city implements the new plan on New Federal Street, that lane gets taken away and becomes parking, then you're creating like a little more real estate to soften the corner.
We will likely address that with Federal Street. We are looking at a number of treatments, bump outs, things like that.
Right.
That would realign that curb, that curb return. And and also, we would want to address both sides of that at the same time so that when we had a ramp in, you have a place to go, right? We had the the second ramp in as well, so.
What's the project completion date for that?
But but we are going to be providing new curbs, probably, or not new curbs, but new sidewalks, you know.
Right.
There's an opportunity, that's not a problem, enhance walkability and all that.
Thanks.
All right, so next meeting is September 21st.
And and if I could just add, Anthony, for our new members, what's required for you if you want to participate in voting in this application is for you to have thoroughly familiarized yourself with the entire record of this proceeding. And I can state from being here that it's quite a record for this. There have been a number of submissions. I would ask that Eric and Aaron put all the prior submissions into the shared file and probably make it available to everybody to review. And if you could go back to next week, meeting and state on the record that you feel that you thoroughly familiarize yourself with the record, then you are able to participate in voting on the application.
We we also have the previously recorded meetings as well, so you guys can all watch the mini-series of Kings Landing.
Eat your heart out, Gilded Age.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm going to move that we table this application and adjourn it until the September 21st meeting.
Second, all those in favor?
Andy, can we vote to table it?
Yes, you could vote, it's usually, yeah.
Sorry.
Good question. Thorough thinking.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for the members of the public who came to speak tonight. Going to move right along.
We've got Chief McMahon in the back there. He's been waiting patiently. I'm wondering what what project he's here for.
He's actually, this is, it's a good time to, it's the first item on new business.
Okay.
Sorry. And also, counsel has to recuse himself on that, as previously stated. So I don't know if we have, I'll go out in the hall and see if we have Corporation Counsel available as well.
All right, thank you.
Trying to save some tax dollars, you know. Get them off the clock.
So while he's doing that, I will announce that the next item on the agenda is PLPC 2022 76. This is 898 Second Avenue. So we're waiting one moment while we get alternate counsel. Room really cleared out, huh? Oh, thank you.
Yep. Oh, Kevin, I'm still soaking wet.
Yeah, you got caught in that.
Oh, Mike, yeah, on motorcycle.
Oh, jeez, from the port.
Okay, so we, we have not made provisions for counsel this evening on this, on this item. Right. So what I suggest is you guys go through the normal, the normal whatever, rigmarole. And, and then when you take public comment, you can decide at that point if you're ready to act or if.
If we need to consult with counsel.
Consult, you know, counsel and we'll make provisions for the next meeting if that's where we end up.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Good evening. Nick Casa from Advanced Engineering and Survey. And it would be, is Jared George, representing the applicant for this redevelopment at 898 Second Avenue. So the, the proposal was, this is, this is a site that already has existing buildings located at the corner of 126 and Second Avenue, right near the Hannaford Shopping, Shopping Plaza. And what the applicant is proposing is to redevelop the site by removing the existing building that's there and building a 3,500 square foot medical facility. And in the associated parking. And there is already parking developed on that site that's used as part of the shopping plaza there, the supermarket. So it would require to, because we're, we're utilizing one of the curb cuts for accessing the, the, this new building, this replacement building, it will require a new curb cut for the, the parking, the parking lot. So we're talking about an existing building that already has water and sewer services, electrical services. And we would, we would utilize those as much as we can. If necessary, we would put in new, new laterals for serving the, you know, the, this new, this redeveloped building. The, the site is located in the shopping center, commercial B dash or B three zone. It will require a couple of variances, area variances, because in the B three code, and this is a corner lot, it requires a hundred-foot setback, I believe it is, from, from the, in the front, the front setback. And we were substantially deficient on, on that setback. The existing building is, is, is really what we're replacing. So we, we will have to go in front of the zoning board of appeal and request those variances. So if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer those.
Thank you. I don't think there is anyone here, but just in case, is there anyone from the public who came to comment on tonight's application? Actually, I do see a hand on Zoom. Is that Justin? Are you here to comment on this application?
Unfortunately, I'm not actually. I'm here, I'm here unfortunately to ask a question. I seem to have missed PLPC 02022001. Did that get withdrawn?
It's crossed out on our agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry. My mail-in, unfortunately, I had a mail-in agenda. I apologize. You guys have a great evening. Good. Very impressed with King's Landing. My apologies.
No problem.
Have a good night. I'm sorry.
Any of the members of the public who came to comment on tonight's application, this application? Okay, so then we'll turn it over to Commissioner comments. I'll go first.
Go ahead.
One of the first questions I had, do you have any proposed lighting improvements for the lot or just what, what would the site lighting look like?
Yeah, we, we are, I believe we, we are adding at least some lighting.
Is it just off the building facade?
The majority of it is. I, I think that we may have one additional light pole, light fixture that.
Trying to find it.
No, I, I don't believe you're going to find it. This, this again is the concept plan, but we've, we've further developed the plan and we are adding one, I believe, one, one light pole, one light fixture.
And Nick, could you talk a little bit about drainage, site drainage?
Yeah. So the grading, Roddy, the, the grading is, is really not going to change a lot from what, what's currently occurring there. And we are creating a little more green space at the rear of the site where that existing building burnt. When was it? A year or a couple of weeks ago? About a month ago. So that, that space is going to get converted to really a buffer between this building and the, and the neighbor adjacent to us. They're further east on, on 126th Street. So behind this building, there won't be another building. So as far as drainage, the drainage currently goes out to Second Avenue and it'll, it'll continue to go towards Second Avenue, but it'll probably be reduced because there'll be less impervious area by, you know, from the removal of that, of that existing building.
But there's no catch basins or anything being proposed for the surface lot?
No, there, there is, again, the drainage currently goes out to Second Avenue and, and that's how we're going to manage the stormwater runoff from the site. And the grading is towards Second Avenue because as you, as you go east, the, the grade rises.
Forgive me if you said it already, but is, is the parking space shared between?
No.
Any other properties? Do, does anyone, that's a lot of parking for that size building.
It, it, the, the, the parking shown within the new parcel lines is all for the, the, the new building.
Familiar with that area. New, you anticipated demand for that much park?
Well, I, I, I think we, we are maybe, maybe not as many parking spaces as shown, but I drive by the well now on Housick Street twice a day at least and.
Always full.
It's always full. Yeah, exactly. So I, I don't, I don't think we want to underpark situation, so.
I guess I'll leave it to other commissioners to comment on. Thank you for your answers.
Yeah, welcome.
Just wondering about the flood zone. I know it floods a lot over in that general area.
Yes. So we'll, we'll have to have flood insurance, but the, there are, there were, there are existing buildings there. They'll just have to have flood insurance.
But you're not going to take any special.
Wait, there's no basements. You know, this, this building won't have a basement. So it, it, you know, if the flood rises to the finished floor, it will flood. Yes.
Are you proposing an elevated finished floor? Or is it just at straight elevation?
It, it'll be a little higher, Roddy.
Few inches.
Yeah, because you have a curb and then a sidewalk. So it'll be like six to eight inches higher.
Yeah, it would have to be two feet above base flood.
Right.
Any fence going in anywhere?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. I, I don't, I don't think that there's a, now, again, the plan, the plan that's shown, that was the rendering. We, we, we have made a change to, to that particular plan. And the reason for it is that once we did the survey of the site, this, this was a sketch plan that was developed. We had to pull the building a little, a little bit further away from Second Avenue because there is a, a drainage line that goes real close to, you can see it that, you know, well, you, you can't see it on that plan, but we had to change it so that, that area to the east where there's parking shown. That's where I was saying that it's, it's actually going to be green space. So because we had to pull the building back, we, we, we didn't have the space to have the parking spaces behind the building and also the maneuvering that you need to get in and out of the parking spaces.
What drove your, your design towards the square footage of the building as it's 3,500 square feet?
That's a, as you know, the, these facilities have become quite popular and there's, there's been quite a few built in the capital region and that's, that's the range of area of building footprint that they work with, where they find that it provides enough room for their operations.
I, I, I comment on it because given the amount of lot size you have to work with, I almost would expect to see either the building grow and the parking shrink or some of the parking space get used for other purposes, green space, but.
But are, is he, I'm sorry, are you saying that that's the case? Are, are you eliminating a parking area from this plan? Can you actually show us?
Yeah. Yeah. If you don't mind, Jared, Jared, who brought some updated drawings that we, we'd love to share with you.
Thanks. Just, just on the topic of, thank you, just on the topic of the floodplain. Yeah, I'm looking at the, the map right now. The, the base flood elevation, there's just shy of 35 feet, so 34 and change. And the existing grade at the intersection is 31. So the building would have to be built a few, several feet higher than the intersection in order to be compliant. Or they would have to construct it, taking into account that they're in the floodplain and make accommodations for that.
There you go.
Yeah, right. Aaron, do you know the, the height of that, where they're showing that northeast corner? Can you tell us that?
Right. Yeah.
I feel like that might.
Of the, of the site or of?
Of the, of the structure. Does that make sense? You know?
Yeah, I mean, I, so what I'm looking at is, is flyover contours. The site varies from about 31 at its, at the corner of, near the intersection and then the flatter area of the site goes up to about 40 feet and then it really takes off where it goes up another 12 to the property at the rear. So.
Yeah, the, the, there's a, there's a huge transition in topography at the rear, right? This, you know, the, the residential homes on the, on the east side are quite a bit higher.
And, and, sorry if I go for it. So this, this addresses some of my concerns. So I'm glad to see this improvement. One of my, my major concerns, and I've used the, the well now facility on Housick Street.
Right.
I've gone, I've driven there, which has been very easy. And I've also biked and walked there, which has been a little more confusing. And part of that is because the, the entrance
Right.
is tucked around on the other side and there's not really any acknowledgement on where that entrance might be if you're looking at it from the other side. So it doesn't really tie into the community. Obviously, this is a totally separate project, but my concerns are that we're replicating that on this project as well. And, you know, even, even looking at the closest residence, how somebody at that facility might actually get to the well now is, is concerning. So I, I'd like to see a sidewalk on 126th Street right there, connecting the building to the next property. I think that would be a bare minimum. And then I think also having a walkway that goes around, which is not from, from the east side, which is not shown on this new site plan that you provided today. I think that would be a, a good improvement. And then I think just adding, you know, a, a bike rack or something that would provide somebody who's not driving there, you know, especially since it is a healthcare facility meant for people in the community, in the immediate community. I think those are, those are good improvements.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly add, add the bike rack and, and take a look at the sidewalk. I'm not sure what the topography, you know, along that side is, but we can certainly look at it.
I know we have sidewalks in the city that are.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm familiar with those.
I think, I think doing some other site improvements would be appropriate as well as adding some, some trees
Yeah.
along that, that side of the.
Yeah, we'll, we'll develop a landscape plan and we are in the process of doing that.
Okay. And then we'd expect obviously to see a, an ADA or a correct compliant curb cut there as well.
Thanks.
Were there any other commissioner comments? I know in the staff report, there was a comment about addressing fire department concerns for public safety. So I see we have a representative fire department president.
No, no, no.
When you asked for public comment, I was.
It's all right.
Good evening. My name is Eric McMahon. I'm the Fire Chief of City Troy. City Troy Fire Department does EMS treatment and transport. The only concerns that I have is the impact of what this facility is going to have on our department. You just mentioned that the well now up on Housick Street, we go to Housick Street a few times a week to transport people from the well now facility to a, a place of definitive care. This, I believe that this facility is going to draw people from Northern Albany County, Southern Saratoga County and out in the county. There is no hospital that's there, so I believe that people are going to migrate to there and they are going to need to be transported to a hospital of definitive care. I would like to know, is there a study on how many patients this facility is anticipated to, to receive? If they're, if they have a percentage of those patients that come to those facilities, what percentage of those patients need to be transported or brought to a, a, a higher level of care for either cardiac strokes, items that they, that they can't, that they can't handle? I think it's going to have an impact certainly on the fire department, this facility. Because it's going to have an impact on the fire department. It's certainly going to have an impact on the station that's up in that neighborhood. The, it's at the farthest northern end of the city. We're going to, you know, the, the station that's up there, they're already taxed. They are already responding to thousands of calls. And so I would just like to have that impact on the neighborhood, the impact on the fire department studied a little bit more. Like they said, the, the, the building was an old building. It did burn to the ground. It's a, I think that it's a, it's, you know, any development is good development. However, there are, there is an impact that comes with this. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I ask you a question? What kind of things do you think could be done to alleviate that, that pressure, that burden that's on your department?
I, I don't know. The City of Troy's Fire Department is, we are a busy fire department. We do EMS transport. Obviously, we fight fires, there are hazmat calls, we have motor vehicle crashes. Right now, we're doing about 13,000, 14,000 rides a year. At that particular station, there is one engine. At that particular station, there is one engine and there's a cross-staff ladder truck slash ambulance. And when an EMS call comes in, they jump on an ambulance and they, they take the ambulance, they abandon the aerial device and they go on EMS calls, uh, because it's, the City of Troy's, uh, you, you know, ten, ten square miles, eleven square miles, that ambulance and that truck company just, they need to be in service for, for that, uh, that neighborhood. That's the, that's the ideal. This, this facility will place an extra burden on, on that station and, and into the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, can I ask the applicant, uh, is the tenant for this going to be the same as the tenant, uh, at the Well Now facility on Housick?
Jerry, you want to speak today?
That's correct.
Yes. Well now, so would it be possible for them to provide information that would respond to?
We, we, we can certainly, uh, request that information and provide it, uh, as long as they, uh, uh, have it and, and, and I'm sure that they, they would share it. Uh, and we appreciate the fire chief's comments, uh, but we also believe that this area is underserved, uh, and this facility is a good location for, you know, a good place for, for this. It, it will serve that northern, uh, Lansenberg area. So, uh, uh, but, you know, we understand the, that, uh, it may, it may, you know, if, if there's a, if there's an ambulance call, it, it will go to that fire station.
Would the applicant, oh, sorry.
I, I was just going to ask, is there anything that you've done in other facilities, other Well Now facilities where you've had this sort of challenge and you've been able to mitigate the impact on the local emergency?
No, I, I don't believe so. Uh, you know, it, it's, uh, it's either there's a facility there or they go to, uh, a hospital. Uh, or they, the fire department gets, or the ambulance gets called to transport them to, to the, uh, fire department. We, we've done, uh, ones in, uh, Rotterdam, uh, Colony, uh, in, uh, get Catskills, uh, you know, so, uh, they, they provide a service, uh, and, and most of the time, for the majority of them, there is no need for, uh, an ambulance, but, uh, there, there are times where they may, they may have a need for an ambulance. Again, you know, people that are injured, uh, to the extent of, uh, needing, uh, emergency, you know, shouldn't necessarily be going to these places.
Right.
Um, I was going to ask if the data that you do get back from, from Well Now, if that is the tenant, shows, uh, some significant increase of demand on EMS services, would the applicant be open to either contribution to the fire department or EMS services or perhaps a component of the construction, the first thing that comes to my mind?
So, so that's, that's something I, um, yeah, I don't, I don't, I, we have to, we have to get counsel in order to discuss things like that.
Okay.
Because contributions of, of fees or anything like that
Yep.
cannot be on a, on a project basis. It needs to be overarching, we need to have a system by which we consistently analyze proposals of this type to assess fees like that. We've talked about it when it comes to parking and, and other things, and this would be similar to that, so it's a good line of questioning you're going down, but I don't think we have the proper staff this evening to assist with that line of question.
Okay, the, the second, the second half of my comment would be if there might be a element of construction in the building that would suit or benefit the fire department. Could be something as simple as tact that you slap on the roof or extending the radio range, I don't know, I'm not a firefighter. Or it could be m- more specific, or it could be, uh, feature-wise for access for ambulance or fire truck, but.
Or, or shuttle.
Shuttle, something like that.
Something like.
That's where I was going.
So, so the other, the other thing that, um, and I, I don't know if Chief mentioned it, um, you know, part of what's stemming this conversation was that anecdotally, I think it was in North Green Bush, they, they built one of these facilities and the local, the local fire department there had an influx of calls after that was built. So that's the kind of data I think that you guys would be looking for is, is almost not even data that would be provided by Well Now, but maybe data that's provided by area of fire departments.
So how do we solicit that?
Oh yeah, this Well Now went in such and such a date, when we compare call volume for the year before and we compare it to the year after, this is roughly what we're, I mean, and that might help you assess the, the, because this is not necessarily environmental impact, but certainly an impact of, of the project, which is, you know, your purview, so.
Could the applicant also, well, I guess, Aaron, do you think the, the city would be able to make those increases or should we require that of the applicant?
Um, Chief will certainly share the information that he has for the Housick Street.
Right.
Well now, um, but that's not exactly the same type of, um, that area doesn't have the same limited access to hospitals, right? There's hospitals near, very nearby, so it might not be a, you know, it might be a little apples and oranges, but again, if we look outside, um, the city to, to neighboring areas, I'm sure we can find some that are, that are better examples of that.
I think we should ask the applicants to provide that information and if they could use the North Green Bush example, that would be very helpful.
Um, I've got an architecture question.
Sure.
I know that the building that, that you want to build is your sort of Well Now
Yes.
template.
Yes, that's, that's, that's all they've built.
Yeah. Uh, when we approved the one that's on Housick, uh, we were able to tweak it a little bit. Um, are we going to get some more detailed drawings?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Sure.
So, yes, that's correct. Um, there was some minor tweaks and I think what was, what was built there can be replicated here. So I think it was very minor on the top of the building.
Yeah, I think we got some cornices or eliminated some cornices or something like that.
So we can make sure that it's the, the same exact, uh, building. Not what Well Now, uh, prefers, but they understand and they, they would do it here.
Okay, thanks.
Sarah, did you have a comment?
I have a couple of comments and a question. So, I read in the application that this is non-intensive healthcare use. I don't know what that means. Is this an urgent care facility?
That is correct, and that's what we determined from the code, the allowed use code. It wasn't any urgent care, uh, line item.
Okay, thank you. That, that kind of puts things in perspective with regard to what, uh, the chief was describing. Makes total sense. Um, so, all I would say is I agree completely with James Rath and his, um, request for a sidewalk. It, it almost appears as if the site plan just ignores, um, the west side of the site. So that would be greatly appreciated. Recognizing that still it's, there will be a lot of vehicular access, but there may be folks, um, taking the bus or walking from the neighborhood. Again, recognizing the, the, the lack of such facilities in the neighborhood, I think you are going to draw a lot of business, if I can put it that way. And then finally, I just, I'm, I don't understand why you'd be repaving or even resurfacing the southern leg of the parking.
And south, you mean?
South, sorry, thank you.
And south, but reality east leg.
Bottom. Yeah, it's just illogical to me. I realize it's already there. I also realized that the existing curb cut is placing your proposed building where you've placed it. And that you're probably pulling from, uh, again, a, a floor plan template for the facility, which is also constraining you in this narrow east-west direction. But I think the asphalt is dictating too much on this site plan.
Sarah, we have a updated site plan in front of us. Do you have that updated site plan?
Eric shared it with me. I'm looking at that on my phone. That is a little bit hard. It's better, certainly. Um, but it's still just, uh, I realize that the paving is already on the site, but it just seems illogical to, uh, put more asphaltic material on the site. Is there a future in, and I'm sorry, I should have asked this question first. I see the proposed lot line adjustment. What is the purpose of the lot line adjustment? Is it for future development on the adjacent parcel?
No, no, uh, Sarah, I'm sorry. So currently, i- this area is, is all paved, uh, as, as a parking lot for, uh, the supermarket. So we're creating a new lot. So that lot line is, is, is the outline of the new lot.
And will there be an easement proposed, uh, preserved there for that upper lot? Is that the plan? Just because the, if they were going to access that upper lot, it would be.
There'd be a crossover easement, yeah. There would have to be a crossover, that's correct. But the upper parking is, is, you know, for the supermarket.
Yeah, I understand, just the logistics.
Right.
The, the upper lot, but only the east end of it?
Well, it, it's a, uh, so, uh, you, you see the L shape, uh, the new lot line that's L-shaped, right? So, to the north of that line, that, that's parking that's dedicated to the supermarket. And then the upper, uh, lot that's on the east side is also, uh, parking that's, uh, dedicated to the supermarket.
On the east side, you said, the line?
Well, on the, on the east side, you know, uh, behind the residential homes, residential lots.
Can you come point it out for us, Nick?
Yeah.
Sorry, just so we can understand.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
Do you want to?
Oh, this isn't.
I looked at paves in maps. When I opened this in Google Maps, it appears to me to already be paved.
Okay, it's just, that's just the lot line. That's the only thing that's changing here. And then this is changing. Right, of course, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I thought. You guys don't just go wandering up and parking lots?
Sarah, do you need us to try and explain that again?
I do.
So when you see the two legs of the parking lot, both of those legs are, are existing, if you were to look it up on Google, on Google Maps. The area of the parking lot closest to the building will kind of be repaved just to accommodate the new, uh, extents or perimeter of the building and restrike for the spaces up against the building. The remainder of the parking shown is existing. Uh, the part I still need clarification on is where does the lot line, why does the lot line need to be moved at all?
We're doing a lot line adjustment because we're purchasing those lands from Hannaford.
So that, that section of the upper
That L section.
is being transferred to that.
So, yeah, now for Sarah, the area of the parking lot adjacent to the building, immediately adjacent. Then a portion of the leg closest to Second Avenue. The portion which goes from, uh, there's two entrances to the lot. There's the middle entrance to the left, heading actual south. That portion of the parking lot, along with the portion adjacent to the building, is now within the property line of this proposed building, leaving the parts outside of it for use, uh, by Hannaford.
And, and, and those, those parking spots are labeled, you know, the, the twelve, the thirteen and the ten spaces.
Yeah.
Is what composes the, uh.
Yeah, you see the, the numbers in the.
I understand. Okay, so if, if it's a busy day at, at Hannaford and I need to use the overflow parking I will, I'll take any of these curb cuts and if I need to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go into the Well Now parking lot, pass through it and then go into the overflow parking that is sort of, uh, wedged in between the treeed areas.
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
Okay, okay.
Easement James was talking about is that they would still require an easement to access their lower lot there, uh, Hannaford customers. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
So, all right. So, uh, this is a type one action. We do need oh, all right, that was wrong, the staff report. Oh no, sorry, I missed. Anyways, um, it's unlisted, so we still need to declare ourselves lead agency. And then it sounds like we're going to be asking for some adjustments to the site plan so that we can possibly adjourn this, uh, so first of all.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we declare ourselves lead agency for, uh, PLPC twenty-twenty-two. What's the number for us?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
I second. We do a vote, uh, Will Kaminsky. James Rath.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen.
Yes.
Sarah Wengert.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries, uh. Planning Commission declares itself lead agency, so the evidence can go out. I guess it's just zoning in this case, right? Uh, and then, to the applicant, if you're going to adjourn, would you like to be on next month's agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so I move that we adjourn this to September twenty-first. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, motion carries, six-zero. Oh.
If, if you needed a second, I would second it.
Great. Anything further? You're clear on what you need for next month?
No, I, I took some notes.
Great.
Thank you.
Can I make one last comment?
Yeah, of course.
Uh, I'm, I'm concerned about the, you're adding a, a curb cut across from the Hannaford uh, entrance. That, that gives me a little bit of concern from a traffic safety perspective, given that it's not a controlled intersection. I mean, I know that the volume will be pretty low, but I would just suggest using the, the egress all the way, you know, on the north side and then maintaining that ingress on the south side and just eliminating that one.
Just to go out?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, i- intersections, you know, with proper traffic or traffic, uh, design, you want the, uh, intersections to be opposite of each other so they, you can, you know, you can see what the, what the movement is going to be. You don't want them offset.
Right, right, but it's, it's an uncontrolled intersection.
Yes, it is.
You know, uh, like PM peak hour.
Right.
That would give me some pause. And I think just giving that gap, especially with queuing probably make more sense to move it to the north side. I, I mean, Aaron, if you disagree, I'd, I'd like to hear your perspective too.
I can, I can understand wanting driveways and roadways to line up.
But there is no light there, yeah.
They will need two-way, they will need some other two-way access, I think, to that lot.
Yeah, and I guess that does contradict some of the emergency access concerns.
Ambulance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 I understand what you're saying, certainly.
So.
I, I, I definitely think that if this is, but this is intended to be overparking, um, certain curb cuts and crosswalks would be
Right, right.
to, you know, for drivers that, they can expect pedestrians to cross the road there.
Right.
And signage.
So just.
Very underutilized, this real estate city. I don't think there's many cars that
No.
are there, um, not even on the lower upper section.
No, I, I think, I think there's some of the employees, uh.
No, yeah, I don't think that it's utilized now. I think it's great that it would be used, but reiterating the, the pedestrian traffic concerns and then just returning to the site plan with an emphasis on or a focus on emergency access, I think. We'll leave it at that.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we have PLPC twenty-twenty-two. Okay, moving right along, we have PLPC 2022 81. This is 885 Fifth Avenue.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Al. I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Casablanca Realty. In our project, we are presenting to update a site that has not been updated since the late seventies. In our application, we're not adding anything new to the business nor the site. We're just updating it and we provided an application just to notify the city of Troy that we're going to update the site and that's all.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, so TAP has prepared a site plan for you for this challenging, exciting site. You can see there is no controlled access to the site. There are cars everywhere. There's only a small section of curbing that exists, maybe, maybe a third of the site is curbed. The new business is going to put up a canopy over the the over the two gas pumps. So what you see is an attempt to kind of work with the existing curb cuts, if you can call them that. This is just one big asphalt field, an attempt to establish parking restrictions, parking lines, and attempt to bring and remove some of the asphalt and bring back in some green space. You can see the only green space on this site now is now occupied by that blue and red car. So this is an awful lot of improvements and sidewalks to lay on one small business owner. So what we've, what we've shown you is our our best attempt to organize the site to eliminate pedestrian conflicts, to introduce some safe walking spaces, but also to keep the cost reasonable. Now, on on top of, you know, after submitting this, we learned that that section of Northern Drive, that diagonal there, is actually being considered by the city for alteration. So, but you know, that's not, it's not like a plan we have to work with, so I think what we hope to see is a an extended timeframe given to achieve this so that planning and engineering and the applicant can kind of work together to decide, okay, instead of installing 250 linear feet of new concrete curb along Northern Avenue, maybe, maybe that investment should happen in another spot on on one of the one of the edges of the property. So yeah, we'll just take your questions. So basically trying to reduce the impervious area, reduce pedestrian conflict, add some some green space and to control the traffic patterns. And what what has also been done is the, there is no longer a service station component in the in the business. That has been, they already have a CBO and they're already operating that more as a grocery store, so they've expanded the grocery offerings within the building. There was a a small mechanic shop with a with a small, you know, snack and convenience kind of retail component, so.
Just to add one thing, the only reason we decided to remove the mechanic shop is if you drive like on Fifth Avenue, you see a lot of mechanic shops with just junk cars all over the place, so we didn't want to have just one extra mechanic shop on Fifth Avenue. There's already plenty, so what we decided to do is just to extend the grocery sales and update the canopy, the gas pumps, the asphalt sidewalk, add more green areas, just like TAP said, and that will be it.
Thank you. So I guess I'll ask Christopher Vanneman, if the public wanted to comment on this application, either in the room or on Zoom. Yep. All right, turning to commission then. What's your comments?
Of course. First of all, thank you for coming here and trying to clean up this ridiculous lot. I really appreciate that. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about the need for the northwest, the driveway that's shown on Northern Drive, and it looks like it's just egress from the site plan, but it's a little unclear to me.
Um, well, I think that's exactly what it is, this egress from, I guess if you you wanted to continue out northern. Now, if so, if you wanted to go south, you and out of any, then out of any of these, any of the other three curb cuts, you would have to take a left into ongoing traffic, so this way it's a right only. But again, I think it it's, it's not critical and could definitely be manipulated with engineering advice.
My recommendation would be to eliminate that driveway, just keep the three curb cuts. And then the shaded area on the site plan is green space, correct? Are you looking to plant any trees on the?
Yes.
On the site?
Yes, yes.
And those aren't shown on the site plan, right?
They should be, but yeah, we're definitely going to plan trees. The other thing why we wanted to have the drive-through, we were thinking about having first drive-through gas station, actually, there's only one in upstate New York. This is going through the second one, where people actually, instead of walking in, they could just literally grab everything from a window. We, you know, there's a microphone, it's like McDonald's, Burger King. So it's something that is new. It's spreading a lot down south in Florida, Miami, Los Angeles. And we said, you know what, why not in Troy as well? So that's what we're planning on doing.
Yeah.
We studied this, we did the survey, and it won't cause any inconvenience to the customers, the neighborhood, or it's not like we're squeezing things. We have plenty, plenty of space.
Yeah, you certainly have plenty of space. I don't love the idea of adding of the first drive-through to Lansing Bridge. It's not something that I think is necessarily a positive change, but I will say that I think you have a lot of other positive changes here. And I would suggest removing that that driveway from Northern Northern Drive. I think that would be a positive improvement to the site plan.
So if that, and I'm sorry, I didn't know that Lisa worked on the plan without. The, so we could bring that driveway out to Turnpike Road.
Yeah.
If that turned to be a.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to dive in.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, there's a number, there's a number of little tweaks I think we should make. First, I, I understand the scale of the project, the budget that would be involved. And, you know, I take that in consideration when I'm, when I'm going to ask some things on this. I think the focus should be the curb line on 25th Street. And with returns to Turnpike and Fifth Avenue, so we can focus on that section of the site for this development. Then the city, when we go through new future work in there, we can pick up that work and continue on. I don't think the asphalt's anywhere, as you start to go around the building, around the corner, Northern Drive, I don't think any of that asphalt has any purpose at all. It can just be removed as part of this project. You're already moving. It's my understanding you have to replace the two.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is not, this is not a small budget project. This is a big budget project.
Especially.
Small building, it is just, it is a gas station, it will be a gas station, but dollars are being spent. So I think that, this is crazy, you know, going to this thing, I apologize. But what I'm thinking is you just focus on this. Okay, as far as this development goes, this back here, we should just not, not try to resolve it because if there is a land swap that's going to happen here. What the city's considering is abandoning this section of the road. All the only utility that we have there is a water line, so we would take a water line easement over it and then square off these two lots. If you remember, the Pettits purchased that building a while ago and they were here to do, they were using it for storage or something like that.
Yep.
So these are the two lots we're talking about and we can just square them up. They each have this kind of, you know, diagonal easement that goes to the property, we would be able to build on it. But you could put parking over it, you know, things like that, and certainly circulation driveways and other things. And then as far as curb cuts go, I'd like to see that reduced even further. I think they don't need to. The curb cut that's shown on 125th closer to the symbolized intersection essentially not going to work when people are queued there waiting. So it's really doesn't do, you know, too much.
That's the one near the red car in that view?
It's would be right in front of that teal. Does you see the red and the teal car?
Yeah, yeah.
So in part of this.
Right. Oh, the one in front of the teal one is the one they should keep or should not?
Supposed to be intersection.
Okay.
So Eric, can you use this? You know, it's going to be unlikely that you're going to get people able to make even a right-hand turn out of it, queue at the light, and then a left turn might be a little sticky here. So I think as you're approaching the site, I imagine most of the patrons will be approaching it from 125th. Obviously, the Fifth Avenue side, given the lot's current layout, there's no possibility for an entrance off of that.
Right.
However, once if the land is swapped, that would be a potential third area. I like the idea of the drive-through exiting onto Turnpike as opposed to Northern Drive, but again, if the property exchanges hands, that would be a tweak that's going to be. So it's not necessary to tweak that at this point, but I don't think we want to see the two curb cuts off of 125th. And then I think, given that you're going to be removing asphalt from other sections of the site, essentially to what would be the curb line. I think it's it's worth including the sidewalk here. We just installed new sidewalk along Turnpike, which could then be a connection here. And again, I know, I'm teaming up like three projects, three new projects this evening, but the intersection of Northern Drive and 125th, that five-way intersection, we'd like to use some pedestrian interest to that as well, which we probably with this project. The city could coordinate doing curb ramps, so that we come in, we do curb ramps, and then.
That would alleviate some costs.
And then they they do this straight shots of sidewalk through their, through their drive-throughs. So, I mean, I'm not.
Yeah.
Not only asking for things.
I like that a lot. I think that that makes a lot of sense. And, you know, I think it's unfair for me to just say I don't like drive-throughs. My my point is that, you know, if you make this a a drive-through centric business, you know, the neighbors across the street at Fifth Ave, you know, they're not walking across the street to get groceries anymore, so. But yeah, I think if if that makes sense and we can see those site changes on the site plan, I think this is a great project.
Is that something that needs to be redrawn and resubmitted, or can we agree to certain stipulations of what we would step?
I think, I think the site plan needs to be drawn on top of this, so I think.
We do, we do have a survey.
What I would see is the site plan on top.
I also think the the changes are significant enough to warrant an updated site plan because it's it's not significant necessarily in terms of the concept, but just the details that would, we would all be guessing on where those details would be.
Yeah.
Change and I think we need to see them on paper.
Yeah, when I look at these curb lines that are on the site plan, they do not, they're not the same curb lines that are on the survey.
Yeah, because the actually, the actual survey concluded that the property is larger than what we have on the actual.
Purpose of the survey was to that you could
Yeah.
propose work that ties into existing things.
Yes.
So I know what piece of curb you're removing, that's the purpose, right? Also to see approaches.
We show that. This is trace.
Maybe you guys don't have the updated one or something because this thing was postponed like three times.
You need to, as a layer.
Did you already replace the garage doors?
No, we have not touched anything because we're waiting for the approval because we wanted to do everything one time, and that's why we were a little bit excited about these meetings because the last one was postponed and the one before that we were postponed as well, so. And we have contracts with a lot of these contractors and, you know, especially right now with the shortage of steel and stuff like that, we were excited about installing the tanks and stuff like that, but with us being postponed is just gonna make these contractors to charge us actually link fees and those are heavy fees because it's summertime.
So then, Aaron, what? Question. Aaron, do you have an answer for that?
We already have the permit.
The change of use, adding the drive-through. I mean.
I guess.
Just a tank replacement, like just a tank replacement, like not, but that's.
Well, the question is.
So. The question is, could they get started on the tank replacement?
If.
You wouldn't want it, I mean, you would want.
If I could just add a comment, we already have a permit to swap the tank, to replace it. We already pulled out a permit. However, it's the same contractor and he's coming to the site. Hey, he just wants to come to the site and drop all his tools and which are, you know, he just wants to come to the site and do it one time. He's kind of all up and running.
He could drop his tools off.
Decide, you know, the whole job one time.
I don't think that's a good idea. There's reasons why, but the biggest one is that if that project goes sideways, he's going to be here saying, I spent so much money on the tanks, that's why I don't want to. So I don't, I think you should look at the project as a whole.
So, Aaron, I do believe this is a direct trace, but we'll make it more clear.
I mean, I assure you, we will do whatever the city requires. I mean, where we invested in this property, just do, we came on the, on the, on the, on the committee just to assure that we do whatever will make the whole neighborhood look presentable.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
No, you're, you're.
We, you know, you won't be up here as long as King's Landing.
Oh, no, oh, no.
But I think, I think next month would be great to just see those changes quickly.
All right. So all we're required to do, just add the thing on the survey, the site plan on the survey?
Well, again, I would, based on the changes we spoke about, I'd like to see, again, using, I don't, I mean, I'll get technical, using AutoCAD or another CAD suite, bring in the survey from received from the surveyor in digital format as an X rep, an external reference into that file, draw your line work out. So to scale, it is, it is, it is drawn on top of what was supposed to, so we know that everything fits. You don't need to redraw the building or or trace over it, just bring it in. You know, and I'd be happy to, you know, give you guys an example of what it's.
I assure you, the shapes and scale are, again, it's just not, you're not seeing it on top.
Well, when I see it on top of the survey.
Thank you.
All right, so as far as actions tonight, this is an unlisted action, so do you need a declaration of lead agency for secret purposes? I move that we declare ourselves lead agency for secret purposes.
Second, all right. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin? Sarah Wengert?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, six zero. And then we'll table this application to the September 21st agenda.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Zero.
Hi.
You're all good for September 21st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, two more applications. We have. We have. Quote my agenda again.
Two more, you said?
Uh, yes, the LPC twenty twenty two seventy five, this is the Emma Willard. Project, do we have the applicant present? Sorry, uh, PLPC twenty twenty two. Seventy, uh.
Yeah, seventy five.
Yeah, sorry, seventy five. This is the Emma Willard project, two eighty five Pauling.
I'm very excited to get up.
I'm sure.
Okay. I am Virginia Arbor and I am the CFO and head of operations at Emma Willard School. Um, we are here this evening to present to the board. Uh, to the commission, uh, plans for renovation. Um, that we've submitted as well as. Expanding from the current building and subterranean annex building. Uh, that will basically, we've been trying to leave the landscape as much intact as we can. So that when we see the buildings from different aspects. Uh, we can actually still see the buildings and even though there's a another building subterranean. Um, we, I believe it's about three acres of property we're talking about. We've got approximately one hundred and thirty seven acres on our property. This does not expand any capacity for our school. We now have a. Capacity for three hundred and sixty students. We're a boarding school. We've been there. Two hundred plus years. Um, pretty known and prominent in our community and all of the areas around where we are. Um, it would not have a need for what we're doing is expanding a performing arts center. Um, so that performing arts center does not really expand any capacity issues. It really just expands on our program at Emma Willard School. Um, it really gives us a way to. Um, sort of, uh. Be close to another building that also has arts programming in it, uh, whether it be music, uh, painting and so forth. Um, I am here tonight with a couple of people. Um, that will walk you through a lot of this. Um. The first person, well, first of all, we hired, uh, Anne Bayha Architects and, um, Bob Carroll, who's here this evening with me. Um, is the architect and, um, project manager of this project. Uh, he will go through all of the renderings and answer any questions that anyone may have on this project. I'm also here with Ken McGivern behind me, who is our, uh, director of facilities management and also can, uh, answer any operational things that you may have. Um, we're also, there is a, uh, CT male we hired as our civil engineers. Um, and here to this evening is Frank Alumbo and, um, the Zoom is, I believe it's Zoom. Is, uh, Lauren Sherman to ask. To answer any kind of civil questions that you also may have. Uh, it's a, we're very excited about this project. It's a very big project. We haven't done one at Emma Willard School for a number of years. And, um. We think this will excel us to the next level when it comes to girls' education. So I'm going to pass it to Bob, who I believe just gave Eric. By the way, we also had a number of people I know that James was up at our site when we first started talking about it. Eric's been there. Other planning, uh, members as well as the fire department and some other folks that we've, you know. Sat in a room and walked through a lot of this already, but, um, just to kind of reiterate that as well. So, Bob.
Good evening. So, um, you all, we, um, we put the application in, we have all the technical, uh. Please let me know if you have any questions about the technical aspects of it. Um, I know you guys have been talking a lot, uh, tonight, so I'll I'll try to be brief. Uh, I'm going to try to show you some pretty pictures too, uh, that just give you a sense of what this building is going to be doing. Uh, on the campus and how it will be perceived as you sort of walk around the campus and give you, uh, again, a little bit more background about why we're doing it. Um, so yeah, just keep going. So, um, this is the campus map. Uh, again, the city streets that we're most, uh, against, uh, right now is Pauline to the bottom of the page. And, um, sorry, Elm Grove to the left of the page. Uh, those are the closest sort of city streets. Uh, that, uh, would, we would have any impact on, and I would say very minimal. Um, the chapel project, the chapel piece of the project, uh, is, uh, number eight there and circled in yellow. So right in the heart of the campus and basically surrounded by already existing context of the campus itself. Um, with no new curb cuts, uh, no new expanded parking. Which I'm I'm sure you guys are tired of talking about tonight. Anyway, so, um, but yeah, so again, in the middle, trying to, uh, not, uh. Again, disrupt any of the context around the campus itself. So next. So again, just an aerial is the off of Google chapel right in the middle. You can see there's a sort of three, three story buildings, three plus stories with the roofs. Walled around Pauline and Elm Grove, um, to the, uh, to the west and to the north. So there's no, um, you know, any changes that are happening are not even going to be seen at all by any of the neighbors or even passersby. So next. This gives you a sense of what we're, uh, what we're trying to do here. There's a sort of green space, so it it is a two part project where we're renovating the chapel itself. To create a new chapel theater seating just south of, uh, five hundred, uh, students and faculty. Um, so they can have all in under one roof, their morning meeting. Um, which they have not been able to do, uh, or not been able to do very comfortably or maybe legally on campus. Um, the other, uh, green space, uh, to it is an adjacent arts wing, uh, that supports the activities of the art. So. Um, that's that green space. So what you're seeing from space is the same amount of grass you're seeing today. Um, for the most part, there's a little bit more of a, of a little service drive between the Snell Beetle McGuire building and our arts wing. Um, uh, full disclosure, this big white stripe you see here is a fire access road. That is continuing to be in a conversation with the fire department of Troy. Um, there is a difference of opinion about whether it's safer or not to have it from this side or another side on campus. I will tell you, we're not looking for approval for that. Now we need to continue that conversation with your chief of, uh, fire chief. And, uh, we will work, uh, with him. Uh, we've, we've made some progress in terms of what, um, materiality he wants o- on the road, but we're still. A little bit of a loggerheads on the orientation of where it is and why.
That's specifically that loop.
Be that loop, yeah. So there's a, there's, uh, half of that loop is sort of a gravel path right now. And, uh, the proposal, current proposal is to turn that into an asphalt road up until around the. Uh, top left corner of the tennis courts and then letting the remainder of that become concrete, like the other walkways on campus or a sort of white concrete. Um, and that's kind of where we are. There's a truck turnaround. You can see that kind of hammerhead. That allows the truck to turn around, but, um, I'd be lying if I told you it was a slam dunk. We still need to talk to the chief and, um, that's, that's an issue.
Is this your i- idea of the best route or their idea of the best route, Asia?
This is our idea of the best route. This is our idea of the best route because, uh, again, I. I I'm not negotiating with you guys and negotiating with him. But but it's, um, we think it gets you closer to the Snell Beetle McGuire building and chapel in this orientation. Uh, than a route that's coming from Elm Grove, which will, uh, just get you to the addition and nowhere closer to. Um, the chapel nor Snell Beetle McGuire, which are kind of orphaned in the middle of the space. So that's our, a bit of a argument sake there. So we're, we still need to. So sorry, I'll I'll keep going. But yeah, please ask any questions. Can we do the next slide? Sorry. Um, so again, you're seeing an aerial highlighted is the chapel space, uh, Snell Beetle McGuire is what we're. Uh, the rest of the arts spaces just off to the top right, tennis courts beyond, and then. Two athletic fields plus another one before you get to any other adjacent, um, neighbors, uh, there. And you can see the sort of wall of buildings, uh, with, uh, Slocum and Sage off the main circle there, so. Not visible from the street. Okay. So this is the, the chapel, uh, historically registered built, uh, nineteen ten, uh, Frederick Cummings, the architect. Um, it is something that is near and dear to the school and part of why, um, we at Anne Bayha were hired. Uh, this is the type of work we do all the time where we, uh, are trying to take, uh, an existing building and bring it into, uh, bring it into the future, but maintain its heritage. Um, so, um, we're very much trying to do that and can see what the approach is as we go forward.
Could I bother you to just stay closer to the mic?
Sorry.
For the recording.
Can do. So, um, in nineteen ten, the building had a very different purpose. It was the gymnasium for the campus. So this is what was inside the chapel in nineteen ten and it stayed that way until about nineteen fifty, where it actually turned into a chapel. So we'll flip. And then so this is what it essentially looked like since nineteen fifty to, if you go there today. Uh, it's a flat floor, uh, and it very much looks like a chapel views and and all. It hasn't been used as a chapel in many years. It's just a sort of meeting space and rehearsal space for music. And what we're trying to do is sort of, uh, bring it, uh, bring it into the modern day, uh, and also increase capacity for, um. For, uh, performances that are happening or meetings that are happening in the space without ruining the quality of the space itself. So the wood trusses all the exterior to be maintained. So next. So again, just existing site plan, you can see where it is and how it sits next to the other building. Sorry, next. Um, and then the concept that again, from we've been working with, um, the folks at Emma for well over a year now. From master planning and coming to the concept of just bringing all the arts together in one precinct. So what was missing is performance and rehearsal space and a gathering space large enough to to hold their whole campus. So, um, this is a kind of overall plan from the sort of main floor. So when you look over at the arts wing, it's not there. It's 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 just, uh, what Anne calls a a pleat in the landscape. So. The the fields that currently there just kind of come up and over the building and it, uh, the green roof is there. There's some edges, so you know there's a building there where the. Light clear story goes into the spaces down below, but for the most part, it tries to be very low profile. So there's a connection to the adjacent building on the main level, so up at grade. And then the next slide shows you, uh, what's going on subterranean. There's a lot more going on there. So. Uh, the big gray box in the middle is the sort of heart and lungs of the building. Uh, and the three large boxes, uh, off to the side, that's the arts wing. So that's a seventy person, uh, music rehearsal space, a hundred seat black box theater in the middle. And then two twenty five people, uh, dance, uh, studios, uh, just in the arts wing. And and they're kind of connected with a loop, uh, below grade. So, you know, circulation and props and people can move through during performances. And public and private can be maintained. So just inside the chapel theater, just some quick drawings of that. Um, the way we're able to get capacity up is we're taking out that flat floor. We're creating rake seating. So it will have good sightlines, um, all the way through. I know this is a site plan review, but I just wanted to show you some of what's going on inside. We can go kind of quickly through here. Again, uh, yeah, so and then there's a balcony that's being extended again to try to get as many people in here. So I think it's at about four ninety. The target was five. That's about as best, uh, as we can get. We're making that building handicap accessible. There's a la- uh, uh, elevator being added into, uh, space as well. And that dash line is just showing you that we're going through the floor and we're going down to that lower level. And how that connectivity works from the stage level into studio theater and back, um, below grade for the most part. So. Yep, so that's what it looks like today. That's what it'll look like, um, with this, with this proposal. So we're, we're dropping down a whole floor. Maintaining all the windows in the existing building. There's obviously a lot more infrastructure that happens up above on the end of the building to allow for. Uh, a pseudo fly and light drops and things for the performance. The stage also has some, uh, has a lift so it can get larger and then can get infilled for larger performances. So. It has a range of folks, uh, in there from just under five hundred to just over three fifty, depending on how big that stage gets. So again, just what's it look like, uh, today and what will it look like later? You can see those doors would be that floor that comes right across and we're dropping down. Maintaining all the texture inside.
Within the footprint of the chapel.
Within the footprint of the chapel.
You're excavating now.
Excavating down within the footprint of the chapel. No, no expansion, uh, which, which wasn't easy, you know, no expansion at all within the footprint of the chapel. Okay. Uh, and again, just another view, again, maintaining all the structure above. So the one, uh, yeah, right here is the one, the one thing that's happening, uh, to the chapel in terms of an intervention on the outside. Is, uh, creating, uh, infilling this porch to create more space for spill out. Um, so folks can, um, you know, during performances, there's more lobby space because it's then, it's never really been used that way before. Um, so this is a very, uh, light touch with blazing on the exterior. We've done it a few other times. I think this is rendering is a little rough. We're, we're refining that curb. Uh, and you can see the field beyond. That's the top of the roof, arts wing. Uh, again, three major spaces, uh, I would say dance was one space, but we cut it in half, uh, so four spaces, some dressing room support. And some office support and the rest of the gray area is either storage or mechanical. Um, and the bird's eye view of that again is just a sort of pleat in the landscape where you see, um, uh, metal roofing on the edges where it flips up. So there's natural light getting into those spaces. Black box theater needs a little bit less, so that's kind of where the the earth kind of comes up. And go to the next slide. You can see how slight this building is. So it's only about nine feet out of the ground, uh, to the left side of the screen, which is south. And thirteen feet at the entrance to the right. So we're doing this, uh, mainly because we love Emma Willard's campus. And if we are going to put, uh, a building on it, we're trying to stay out of the way of what the good context is there. And, um, again, still be able to see the majority of the chapel from all four sides, um, is is was a goal for us. Next. Um, you get again a view. This is, this is, uh, right now, the access road, uh, would probably end up being an access road. Whether there's an additional access road is the part we're negotiating. Uh, but this will be an access road certainly for Ken and his crew to help, uh, help students, uh, when they're having performances, moving plywood in and things like that. Um, uh, but you can see that again, because of its slightness in terms of, uh, elevation, you know, views to the chapel are maintained. That's a a really important goal for us. Next. And then this is, uh, the north, uh, entrance into, uh, into the addition, into the arts wing. So this, uh, is very similar to other buildings on campus. There's just short jumps between buildings. I know it gets cold in Troy in the winter. Um, so we don't have exactly like tunnels between every building. They used to years ago. They're using for mechanical now. Uh, but there are short jumps from one building to another. Uh, this is just a way to get out of one of the ones that is on Elm Grove, uh, into, uh, into this building. And then, uh, inside that, just to show you quickly, inside that is a sort of main street and, uh, a path of. Lockers, you know, again, it's a high school, lots of backpacks, coats. Um, and, uh, these are the doors into those primary spaces and the next three images are just showing you those interior spaces. That's dance. Next one's black box. You can see that little clear story and then the one to the south is the seventy person music rehearsal space. So, um, the last major thing we're doing on the site is, uh, the connector piece. So, uh, there is already an existing connector, but what we're doing is creating a main entrance, uh, to the whole complex with this. So, um, there's some ramps that we're needing to get into SDM, which is that adjacent building. We're doing very little to a little bit of. Uh, upgrades at the corner and some fire separation. But, um, this building has multiple steps up to that main level. This is creating a handicap access to the whole complex. And right around the corner from that existing stairs, the new elevator we're creating. So you get vertical connectivity, uh, into, uh, the whole complex as well, right through here. And the next two images, you can just see right now, it's just a solid connector between the two. And in the next image, you'll see what we're trying to do is just kind of create more of an entrance and obvious, uh, place in which, um, folks would know to go. And again. For universal accessibility to the chapel space, which is for the most part maintained without being touched and, uh, the adjacent SDM building. Um, yeah. Um, so this is the last image I'm showing is just again, just to give you a sense of what, uh, what this new quad on campus will feel like. Clarifying the two buildings, both the chapel and the SDM, the the sort of darker building in the background and then our new, uh, arts wing in the foreground. Um, and I'm happy to talk about anything relative to, uh, the, the plans or the civil plans. Uh, any questions you guys have? I'm just happy to take them on.
Hey, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I don't know that we have any members of the public left.
Did we outlast them all? Yes. Maybe.
Um, so. If anybody is here to comment, they can certainly raise their hand. I'll just turn it over to commissioners. Um, so if anybody is here to comment, they can certainly raise their hand. I'll just turn it over to commissioners.
I love it.
Congratulations. Uh, you know, I know what it takes to get a a project designed to this point and to bring it to a planning, planning board for review. It's definitely been, and I'm sure a process for you. So and they've done a, your architects have done a wonderful job on this design. I I guess the only thing that stuck out to me was the connective corridor between, I think you call that SDM, the darker building in the background.
Sure.
Uh, just material choice. Ultimately, this is a a building that very few people in the city of Troy will ever see. So material choices and things like that are very much so up to you. I was surprised to not see more of the stone in that connective corridor. Um, otherwise, I think it's a a beautiful design.
Yeah, I I mean, I I can comment at the end or I can go one at a time. But uh, for for uh for us, it was about um it was some competing interest there about trying to draw attention to that entrance as a new sort of hub on campus for the arts. And we felt that we needed to have the activity, the light and the um, you know, the transparency of it. So you could see the roof beyond and and not make the roof of the Arts Wing feel like it's sort of the back back. Um, but feel like it's just another place you can kind of meander through, which is why we put the double doors through and you can slide through there. So again, handicap access up to that point, handicap access through it. Um, and um, you know, through that quad in the back that we're creating. So that that drove a lot of of the the gla- the the desire for the glass. And and it's just basically everything new we're creating outside is glass or dirt with grass on it, right? So it's like again, it's just it was an estate.
I think I'm more so reacting to the mullions, to the metal mullion around the windows. And I guess you're gonna have that either way, even if you have stone somehow trimming out the the space. But
Sure.
It's just seeing that definitely contrasts against some of the more historic stone heftier materials.
Hmm.
Um, the other material comment I had was roofing. I saw in one of the renderings um standing sea metal roof or metal roof.
Yeah. So I I think you're you're seeing some of our renderings being done before some of the others. And I think there was a copper one slipped in there. We we, you know. Um, Emma, you know, we, there's a, there's a budget. And uh, uh, we we've we've taken Virginia as far as where she'll let us go on some of these things and and copper roofing was was one of the limits that we had to reel back. And um, so we have um, you know, prefinished metal roof. Uh, I think we're landing in somewhere in a gray paint color. The the campus has a kind of a gray tone to it, a sort of dusty gray. And um, we also felt like we didn't really want to be super showy with our, you know, kind of copper for the first thirty years while it's kind of glitzy. And then it goes to green. Um, so uh, value engineering got us halfway there. And then we sort of rethought it and felt kind of good about making that decision.
I thought I had seen something about um slate roofing as part of the reconstruction.
Yes, absolutely.
Did you consider slate for for the um Arts Wing green uh edges around the
No. So what um, part of what we're doing, uh, so the slate roof for sure is in the project. It's just on the chapel. All the slate is coming off the chapel. New plywood diaphragm is going on the roof of the chapel because we don't have the lateral stability from when they built it in nineteen ten. And so that is allowing us to avoid putting a lot of structural, uh, you know, uh bracing, X-bracing and things within the wood and 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 really kind of be pretty gnarly. We were, we we tried for all of a month and then said, boy, this is really going to ruin the inside. So um, we we've taken that step to remove the the slate from the main building. Put new sheeting on, put this, put new slate on the old building. Now, we couldn't do that. We did look at it very briefly on the Arts Wing. But our desire to keep the Arts Wing down and low, so it's not, you know, sort of a cliff to kind of go up. And you guys are probably familiar with Lincoln Center. That's a beautiful precedent that we looked at for this as a Dillerski video project. That is a mountain. Uh, you you gotta get a goat to go up that thing. And we're we're trying not to do that here. We're trying to make it much more of a inviting and low um thing. And also because we want while you're on that porch to be able to see the mountains beyond. It's really a beautiful view, which I don't think is really captured in these renderings. So um, because we kept it so low, we wanted the pitch really low. And then it like it gets to the point where it's not so good for our slate to be that low. So just walk you through that a little.
You want to jump it?
Hmm.
Oh, the other thing I noticed was there's, there's like a stair that fades into the hillside. Uh, could you talk a little bit? It's on the
Yes, exactly. Yeah, sure.
I'm on page five, but I don't know if the pages.
From the, from the roof to the field?
Yeah.
Yes. I just wanted to hear how you intended to do that.
So, yeah, um, yeah, if you want to go back. Uh, essentially, it's it's a landscape feature. It's a, there's, there's stone, there, there, the steps are essentially mi- mini retaining walls that are holding up and helping us transition off the top of the roof down. And then it just, yeah, it just kind of fades off.
Interesting.
Um, yeah, sorry. It's not the easiest thing to negotiate. Uh.
And then while he's getting there, my my last question is going to be on um in like taking.
Right here, yeah.
Yes.
And yeah, of course I have more views of it closer, but like that's all it is really. If you could just imagine retaining walls that just kind of go from you know, six or eight inches to zero. That's what's happening there. It's just s- s- single pieces of stone spread out probably twenty-four inches apart, uh, and then just help us negotiate that step.
Okay.
There's retaining wall on the south side of that. Again, because we're trying to control the landscape, allow you to go up the roof, but still get those windows into the uh black box theater down below. Because it needs to be a black box theater when the show's going on. But you know, the other three hundred and sixty days while the kids are working on the show could actually have light down there. So we're trying to do that.
So my last question is, how do you get uh props, materials, set pieces in and out of the buildings?
Great. Good question. So actually, this slide's perfect for that. In between SDM. There's a sidewalk lift. So um, doors pop up, um, similar to like a bulkhead, but it's flat and on the, on the ground. Uh, there's bollards, so folks aren't driving over it to to stop you from getting there. But there's essentially uh a a lift there that drops. And this uh is a pretty capable theater, but it's not you know, huge uh stage or it's coming in pieces and getting kind of installed. Yeah, there's another view, maybe the next view when you look down the aisle. Uh, you can kind of see it as well. Maybe the next one.
I assume the.
Yeah, there you go. So you can see it behind the bollards there. So, yeah. So Ken will bring up his, his golf cart with the, with the cart behind it in a four by eight sheet of, you know, painted um Alps or whatever he's gonna do for the backdrop. And that's gonna come and go into there. And kids are gonna do some light assembly inside the space. But there's not really a workshop. That's helping, that's happening elsewhere on campus.
I assume the stage in the chapel is much more accessible. The, for getting props in and out or set pieces, the chapel itself.
So it it's um, the the wide circuit of pathways downstairs, they're, you know, ten feet tall, twelve feet wide. Uh, that's the circuitry around which we're moving things, but everything's moving into the subterranean because the stage there, again, we're, we're not trying to put a big garage door on the side of the chapel. So everything's moving through this.
Everything comes through there.
Everything's moved through the tunnel. Yeah. And again, it's, it's an amazing high school, but it's, again, it's not Broadway. So it's, it's not, it, there's six or, I I want to say there's twelve shows that are happening a year and some of them are dance and some of, you know what I mean? So there's, there's a very few shows that are needing that kind of uh backdrop. So, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. No, this is a great question.
James, did you have something you want?
No.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just second it. It's a beautiful design. It's uh really very striking. Um. I know that the staff had some comments just regarding the fact that uh, that there is only one entrance into the new building from the exterior. And then, of course, identifying the issue with the fire access lines.
Yeah. So uh, I don't have the code plans with me, but essentially the Arts Wing is down a level, right? So there's a, there's an exit there. Um, it's, it's gonna be used. We know the girls are gonna cut from Kellis, which is the adjacent building into it and 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 go in that way. Um, but we have accessible entrances. We have enough of our accessible entrances um, that we don't need an elevator over there. We're not trying to make uh multiple entrances into that building. And uh, again, because of how all these buildings are working together, that Snell Dito Maguire, Snell is the sort of first piece of it. That's the music department currently. So there would be a lot of connectivity below, say, below grade or on the lower level where the practice rooms are into these other practice rooms. So individual practice rooms are in that existing building. And then this up to seventy people orchestra rehearsal is happening down low. So we have an exit or entrance from Snell uh into the Arts Wing. And then we have the elevator uh or sets of stairs that are next to the connector piece that brings you down uh over there. So there's um, we feel like we have it covered, but certainly, you know, we have to get a permit and we have to, we'll, we'll talk with the building department if, if they think differently.
Are there any other comments?
My only question is logistically like approving this or or voting on this without having that fire access road that we know that the department is concerned about.
So, you know, the access road, if that needed to go in necessarily require site plan approval. Site plan approval right now is required when you need a building permit. So the road doesn't need a building permit. So I don't see that as being material to the.
We could in theory approve this site plan.
On the. Yeah, yeah. And historically, um, you know, Troy's blessed with a few uh institutions of higher learning. And uh, we tend to um, take into consideration the location of the building on the, on the campus. Um, this is interior to the campus, right? As as was stated earlier, it's um, it's kind of unfortunate. It's gonna be such a unique building that very few uh Trojans will actually be, be able to see from, from any vantage point. That was gonna be in support though. Just to be clear. That, my point was, is that site plan review doesn't need to be as as stringent here because it's, it's, it's not, it, right. It's not out on Pauling. It's not on Elm Grove. It's interior to the campus.
And by the way, we own almost all the houses on Elm Grove, all the houses on Central, Spring Avenue surrounding areas as well. So I did want to finish though. I, I think we are thinking about that maybe someone from, you know, the Troy community. I know we have the Taylor School. RPI as well, although they have their impact theaters. I don't think they really need our little theater. But some of the other smaller schools and things in the area, I think we should collaborate in having other folks.
All right. Well, unless the commissioners have anything else, I mean, I feel like we have to go for the site plan review tonight. So we first need a declaration of lead agency and uh and I guess a negative declaration for secret purposes.
I move that uh, the planning commission become lead agency.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I. All right. Six zero and uh negative declaration. Is anyone?
Sure. I'll make a negative uh, a declaration of negative impact. No, no impact.
I second. Going to a vote? James?
I.
Suzanne, Sarah?
Yes.
Roddy?
I.
And I vote yes. Motion carries six zero. And lastly, site plan review. Do we have a motion to approve the site plan application?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
All right, going to vote. Will?
Yes.
Yes.
Suzanne, Sarah?
Yes.
Roddy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries six zero.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But I, I I do, I do want to say I appreciate the folks that came out there and um actually had a a real impact on how we were thinking about the building uh and how we were going to e- explain it to other folks. And uh, I'm, I'm quite confident we'll be able to do that with our department. And um, uh, and and we'll, we'll come to an understanding in short order for that. Um, we, that that access road will be used as a construction access road. And so there'll be a little preview of what it'll be like. Uh, because that is just the easiest way to build the building. Um, and um, that might be part of uh, part of the conversation that we we have with fire. But I I appreciate all your time and um, and the support of the project. Thank you.
Easy to approve when you have a presentation like that and the legwork has been done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last application, we have PLPC twenty twenty-two eighty five sixty-one to sixty-five Congress Street. We have the applicant.
You're a tripper for waiting through them everything. That's fine.
Sure. I think you can actually take that mic off the stand if uh, if you want.
If you want.
Well, for the recording, I think we we would prefer that you do that.
Well, my name is Fred. My name is uh Fred Brink. I've been helping Adam with this project post COVID. Um, Adam had to take off to go help with the kids. So um, you know, I'm a a design professional, but I usually don't come to these projects. Um, we had a little bit of background. As you folks may know, um, this building is adjacent to Congress Street. The parking in front of this building was taken away for the betterment of the Congress Street reconstruction project. And there are several storefronts there that have not been able to be rented since the completion of the Congress Street project. So anyways, um, Adam would like to convert those storefronts into residential units. I believe we went in front of zoning and got our area variance and our, our approvals. So I believe we're here. Why don't you folks uh, go ahead and ask me any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Have you guys, have you guys seen this project before?
Uh, I have, I know, yes. Suzanne, okay, you were there. I just wasn't sure if Roddy was on the commission at that point. So the four commissioners who are not new have seen.
I've, I've seen it as well.
James has seen it all. Like that was the odd man out. Um, but yeah, we we're mostly familiar with the project.
My only questions are referring to the use of the stucco on the façades. And then I thought that the the pizza shop elevation that was provided, um, the window looked like it was in a little bit of an odd location. But I I really love what uh is is being proposed overall. The the improvements to the façades, I think, look great. Um, but yeah, I thought, I I don't know if any of the other commissioners had comments on the the use of the stucco or that that location of the window.
Yeah, my only, the only thing that stuck out to me was the bottom row of windows on on the building on the right in this view. Um, I don't know if it's just that it needs more of them or they need to be wider. Sarah, come on, architect, step in. Um, but that, that's the only part of this that jumped out to my eyes. Um, and then I know we had other site plan discussion comments, but if we're sticking to the facade right now.
If they can possibly be taller, I think that would.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Is it the height of them?
The windows themselves, you mean, like a, on the ground floor of the right?
More proportional to the size of the windows above.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then it should, because the middle one is right below the Oriole where there's, you know, three windows. I almost feel like that one needs to be taller and wider and not just one.
Or two.
Or two taller windows.
Two adjacent windows?
Yeah.
Fill the space that matches the bay windows above.
Right.
You know, almost seeing it from this view, this large. What if we carry down uh two small windows on the side? Uh, I'm just throwing it out there. Almost so that we're, we're carrying what's up above down below.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Two narrow windows and then just, just to fill up that, that void. It it does look like a lot of empty space.
Yeah, I think that would help break up the space, definitely.
Yeah.
So you guys are only talking about the right.
Just the right most building.
The other windows, which again are these, so. The other windows, which again are these, so you can see there's clearly three different locations where there's either existing storefront windows or
Yeah, doors in one case.
Yeah. Number two.
Yes.
One I'm thinking of. All right. Just the right side then.
Just the right most building, yeah. Which I'm guessing is five sixty-five.
What about the middle, the, the building two, those, those two windows there are like almost proportional, but not quite. Does that matter?
That works for me.
Okay.
They're, they're replacing them at least with
Yeah.
Vertical.
I mean, I guess it would be nice if they lined up with the windows. constrained by what's there currently on the ground floor.
But it's visually offset by the brown in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That place, I mean, I used to go to that pizza store. And by used to go to, I mean, twice, because it wasn't there. I lived on Pines.
Sarah, Sarah there?
Yes, I'm here. I have, um, I, my concern is less about the front facade and more about the east facade. Because there, I don't think there are any windows on the lower level on the east side of the building, and there's a bedroom proposed there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any photos of the east side in the
Right, so just around the corner to the right.
Yeah.
Can you go to the Good eye, Sarah.
Are you concerned about light and ventilation for the bedroom?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, so I think you're gonna have to cut in a new window. And what, what would be nice is to cut one in. Oh, I don't know how to notate in this, but, okay, so on the upper floors, there is a window. There are two windows on the east side, okay? One for the living room and one for the bedroom if it's the same floor plan above. But there are none at grade level. And so you'd have no natural light coming in on the east side. I know it's just next to the driveway, but you really have to have a window, at least for the bedroom.
Yes, yes, one hundred percent. You know, um, we haven't really considered the exact layout of how these are gonna work. But we'll have to meet all the code requirements to get our, where uh, or, you know, once, once we propose a floor plan to get our building permit, we will have all of our code issues taken care of at said time.
Fair enough, yep. Yeah, that's the only concern I have. I, I, I won't be I won't be picky about the, the windows on the main facade, the south side.
And just for conversation's sake, now that I actually take a look at it, you know, it might almost be easier to um, place that bedroom. Um, we'll just use the orientation of the paper along the left side. Um, bottom of the page, place that bedroom in that lower left-hand corner, and then that bedroom will have a, a window, and then we could uh, tuck the kitchen in on the, I, where the bedroom is now, and then we would have a nice uh, open space for that, uh, that one bedroom apartment there. So, you know, there's things that we can do to reconfigure everything. But uh, yes, all these issues will have to be addressed during our design to obtain our building permit from codes.
Great, thank you.
Roddy, did you have other concerns?
We're just trying to find the windows that Sarah's been
Oh, they're on the side.
Yeah, and I see, I see.
Yeah, so if you're looking at the side, she's saying there's two windows on third, floor three and floor two, and she just wants to see one, two more there, at least one.
All on floor one.
Yeah, yeah, which actually, there's a great change there.
Yeah.
So that window might have to look slightly different than the other ones, but that's where code comes in because it would be required to have a certain area for ventilation and egress.
Gotcha.
Well, as far as the front goes, I think the direction was clear. I've got, trying to figure out how we're gonna boil this down into stipulations.
Also, that you, the building labeled utility that's existing?
That's existing? Cause I'm struggling to find that. It's hard to see in street or map, okay.
I think it's covered by the tree if you look in at the aerial. No, you can see it from the aerial.
Yeah, I see.
You see the rubber roof.
All right, are there any other commissioner comments, questions?
What was our, so when we previously uh, reviewed this, there was something with the property ownership or the parking in the back alley.
So the prior application
Completely different.
It involved parking that I think is no longer part of the application because they have a zoning carry.
He orig- they originally went for a variance. They were denied the variance.
Okay.
They then went through three different noncepts for parking. I don't know. We went back and forth to try and negotiate with uh, the applicant, trying to negotiate with adjacent landowners. In the end, went back to the ZBA.
And approved.
Additional information saying they tried. They, they finally did grant the
Okay.
So yeah, that's why there's nothing part of this.
Right, which allowed it, which then, and they also granted the um, it would have been a waiver for residence, residential on the first floor.
Yeah.
So now the site plan aspects of it are really uh, minimal facade and
So nothing, well, it says proposed courtyard in the back corner, that's
All right.
Yeah, the proposed courtyard, um, basically what Adam has in mind there is we're just going to create a little patio with a ground-mounted permanent type of uh, barbecue, a picnic table. Um, just uh, for a place for the residents to hang out.
Love it.
Have we been declared lead agency?
We have not, this is unlisted.
I'll make a motion that we act as.
No, it says, it says it's unlisted in the staff.
Oh.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Are there any members of the public still on the Zoom call who would like to comment?
There might be. Who's Angela?
I, I would have guessed it was Angelina. Okay.
It was, if, if it said
It said unlisted in the staff report.
Yeah, if it said unlisted, that was, that's an error.
It makes sense.
Probably a holdover from when the parking lot was being
Okay.
At this point, there's almost no ground surface.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And it might be unlisted because of the variance is required, which now it's not, so.
Cause I've
Size-wise, it's type two.
Right, all right. In that case, then no, there's no uh, no need for
Is anybody looking for stipulations or?
So I think if we were to approve it tonight, we would need to approve it subject to the stipulations that, uh, well, they already have the zoning variance required. So just basically that they would I guess we could include that they make the adjustments to the windows that we discussed. Um, which we could just say subject to submitting something to City Engineer.
We had comments on the front.
We had comments on the front of the sides.
I, I would say, I had comments from beside, I'd say, you know, it's in their best interest to make those changes. I don't feel it's necessary to stipulate them, but if anybody else was otherwise, I would agree with that and make the motion.
Yeah, those are mostly aesthetic, so we can, we can just say that they're advisory. Uh, and as far as the windows, I do think the window, enough ground floor needs to be addressed, but we can make that a stipulation.
You wanna make the
Sure, so I move that we improve the site plan, subject to the stipulation that windows on the east facing wall of the ground floor, five sixty-five are included, uh, that comply with code requirements.
Second it.
All right.
I'm in favor.
Moving to a vote, we got one.
James?
Can I just?
Oh, yes.
You, you also requested changes to the windows in the front, but the applicant, I believe, had consented and agreed to do that, so confirm that he's agreed to do that. You don't have to make it a condition.
Great, yes. So we didn't make those a stipulation, but we understand that, that you do intend to make those changes, so uh, hopefully with the discussion that we had, you know, you have the information that you need to include those in the, in the design.
We'll incorporate the uh, changes that we discussed into our design.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so moving to a vote.
I, I'm still in favor.
Sarah?
Yes.
Roddy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries six zero. Site plan is approved subject to those stipulations and uh, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd make, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Or close second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.